Morning in progress.
Good morning, everyone. It's March nineteenth, Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Welcome to the regular session of Harney County Court. If you would kindly stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yes. Budget hearing.
Okay. They're long before eleven o'clock, but we have to wait till eleven if it's bulletin for eleven. Eleven thirty, okay. Um, all right. Taking care of vouchers and accounts payable review, any late items for agenda today?
No, sir.
No.
Uh, we're in motion to approve today's agenda.
So.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five county court regular session agenda. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval. We have one, two, three, four, five sets of minutes from March fifth. Um, Harney County, Harney County Court meeting, regular session, special executive session. Yeah, the special executive session and um. March sixth, the joint work session with the fair board, March eleventh, Harney County Court special session for budget review. And March fourteenth, emergency session and regards to the emergency declaration of emergency. And with all those, instead of doing them at once, I would just propose we. Approve them all at once.
Yeah.
Unless there's any specific discussion.
And and gave like a couple of edits and I believe Commissioner Frank did as well. And with that, I would move to approve. All five sets of minutes that were just mentioned by Judge Hart.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the five session county court session minutes from. March fifth, sixth, eleventh, and fourteenth. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have a update from symmetry care.
Sir.
Guys, yeah, um, and I'm here with the two of the staff. We have the incoming director, which is Emily. I think everybody knows Emily was here long ago. And then Mrs. Kayla Burke is the new compliance officer who's going to be taking Emily's position. So we've moved forward in that way. And when you need to talk about the contract, the contract is expiring when I do. Um, we've been end of, well, first of July, and this is through June thirtieth. So we got a contract to get updated. I think Emily, there's a clause in there that has my name as the key person in that. Yeah, I decided to keep that without needing to be Emily in that position there. And it's our chance kind of today. And these guys are going to present that about the updates and the elements in the contract that we provide to the county. So they'll be going through that pretty briefly and we'll take some questions at the end of that, but. Um, you know, Patty brought up a good point yesterday, like, what is this contract? And, you know, what does it really cover? And and so there's, and I think it's good to talk about that. So very briefly, the county, the contract that we have with the county covers the non Medicaid services that we provide. That's safety net services that includes crisis services, but there's also crisis on the Medicaid side too. But it's, this is really for people that don't have insurance or underinsured or don't have insurance. So we provide a sliding P scale for their services. They can slide to zero based on their income. Um, it's also other things like civil commitments. Um, it's our services to the jail that we provide. Uh, let's see what else would be in there. Things like, gosh, what am I thinking about? All the service elements, there's peer services.
U I services for.
A and D and mental health bowl again, but it's the, it's the non Medicaid group that that covers there.
Convention and education and outreach too.
Yeah.
Do your risk cover.
Every county has to have a community mental health program and then, and those elements are in the contract. The contract that we go by is this, and this is, and I'm not going to go through this. It's massive. And this is our, the contract with the state of Oregon or Oregon Health Authority to do those things. And what this contract is provides us is that you guys are delegating us to provide those services. So that's essentially how we, so.
Chris, the question, so since, and that was good because he clarified that for me yesterday at the symmetry care meeting when they knew. That they would be here and I just said, you know, it might be nice just to get us all shored up again on, on what the county funds that, that go right to you as our contractor. What is, what does it cover? What does it not cover? When, um, when inmates in jail lose.
Coverage.
Coverage, does that mean that safety net applies to them during that period of time?
Yeah.
Preparation services.
And then when they were released from jail, a lot of times they're Medicaid eligible, they have coverage again, and then that covers their services and want. But there's been a, that's been a kind of a thorny issue is people losing their Medicaid coverage while in jail and there's arguments born against that. But they do. And so they basically, they don't have insurance for the services that they receive while they're in the jail. So this picks that up. Um, and then they're back on once they get out of jail, so.
But the contract isn't. Specifically says it's for crisis services in the jail. Maybe that's why when I mentioned, you know, it was just for crisis, I was thinking mainly that. So what does a crisis mean compared to what? Could be provided if it weren't. So I think you're probably, well, and I think you're probably aware that there is a house, I believe it's a house though. Um. Being posed right now to, so that inmates can keep their Medicaid while they're in jail. Yeah. Um, so then if they did, if that passed and they kept their Medicaid, basically they had Medicaid, they'd still get all these services. So right now there's a gentleman in jail that actually is not from our state. Um, so he doesn't have Medicaid, doesn't have any insurance, but we have been coordinating all kinds of crisis services. Our psychiatric provider went over yesterday to meet with him because he is in crisis. So, um, once that crisis is stabilized, that's where the end of it. Kind of comes, if that makes sense.
Um. Is that, is that covered, those services, is that covered by the pass through funds that, well, not pass through anymore. I think we set it up so that they cover the great teams. But is that covered by those state funds?
Those crisis services?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's the way we looked at it. And so they're, they're covered in there. Um, I'm trying to think of a good way to answer that, you know, if you, if people maintain their coverage, you could work out potential treatment programs. It would be sort of ongoing, non crisis related in the jail. I think you go, you would have to look at. Um, the manpower issues and whether that's a service that's going to be provided by jail staff or they'll be provided by mental health staff going into the jails. And you, those would be some things you'd have to get worked out in that, in that situation, so. But today, as we're.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead. What happens if the crisis isn't resolved?
We keep coming to help out until it gets there. So. My understanding, like for this gentleman, for example, uh, we were able to get him a bed at the Oregon State Hospital and he should be leaving today. He goes to that. Um, so then the responsibility transfers to the Oregon State Hospital and, and then we're all out of it, right? Um. What happens after that? I'm not sure, but we will help.
Well, it depends on the legal status. This is, this is a very specific situation where somebody's not able to, or does not appear to be able to aid and assist in their defense. And in that, the court order can be made in those situations, which is what occurred where Oregon State Hospital was asked to evaluate that, number one. And if the person is not able to aid and assist and to provide treatment until they are able to aid and assist or determine that they can't be restored. Uh, and be able to aid and assist and that, so there can be, depending on what happened there, there can be issues because person can be sent back. And they could be asked to be restored in the community, but they're not really from here. So, but their charges are, so that, that makes it hard. If they could potentially stay, but this is a sort of rare.
Very rare.
Yeah, I wouldn't throw this to be like the common scenario.
So and the, the hope is, is when they are at the Oregon State Hospital, right, they get stabilized. Um, and then everything might go a little bit more smoothly after that, but, um. But for like regular crises in jail, I mean, we get all kinds of calls for crisis in the jail. Like one time somebody called for a crisis worker because. He wanted a cup of coffee. I, actually, that's happened several times. Um, so we're like, well, that's not really a crisis. Um, we're not going to walk over to the jail and bring you a cup of coffee. Um, so and we, we just, you know, we work on that big.
The effort.
Yeah, I get that.
As they transition out, so if they were seen in crisis, they're usually not in jail indefinitely. So and, and there's a lot of times there's court orders that they engage in treatment once they get out, that type of thing. So we're picking up or not.
Well, we'll cover a little bit of that too in this PowerPoint of the services that we have provided and will continue to provide.
Sorry to get you off down rabbit trails. That's what I do. And because we're a legislative body, because we advocate at a state level as well, I have to ask, is there? Enough capacity at the state hospital or at a state level to meet the needs of people that need those services?
Fairly. No.
No, they're, they're, they're absolutely, we're, we're really fortunate in this situation. There. You know, I talked to the admission person there at the state hospital like two days ago and she goes, I really feel bad for small jails that. I have really serious people like this, that they, they don't have a whole unit of people and staff to address and some person like that. Uh, and so she goes, we're going to try to get this person in, and they did, and, and that, but some people could be waiting weeks or months or it's.
I was, when I saw that they were going, I was like, I didn't think that could happen also.
Oh, no, there's not. They have, they have backlogs, people sitting in E Rs and different things like that because they can't get in place. But that's all, that is a whole other longer discussion.
So the state is trying to rectify that right now. Um, there was a lawsuit, um, because of this issue for access to Oregon State Hospital. Um, and they have basically locked down access to the Oregon State Hospital for people who need aid and assist like this. Um, civil commitments and well, aid and assisting community restoration can go hand in hand, but so it's. So basically you don't want to get into the Oregon State Hospital now. It will fall under those areas. Um, which has increased access for these types of situations. Um, it has decreased access for your less acute people who, uh, you know, we know that. Somebody needs some acute psychiatric care, um, but we have to try to manage that in the community now. Um, because there isn't state hospital or psychiatric access unless they are, um, not falling very, so slippery.
I think, you know, if you're going to talk about advocacy at a state level, um, I, I focus at this here, but this is. Cause I worked at the state hospital, I worked out here for years and. The state hospital is a huge drain on resources, but it is a necessary, there need, you need to have something like that because there isn't places. For people to go that are that acute. Um, but there is probably room to really build out more on residential and things in the community to keep people out of the state hospital. Where you can stock short of that level of care and reserve that for the most severe people, but you, you know, so. Yes, would be great to have more beds, but I really also think you got to put some, some money and some resources back into communities and residential and respite care type facilities.
Stabilization centers.
Yeah, stabilization, yeah, and some of those places do, um, prevent people from needing to go there. So that's. In a short, sweet way of saying that, I'm just, just saying more state hospital beds is probably the total answer.
And I have one more question and we can wait till the end if you want, but it's around civil commitments, the kind that we at a community level need to deal with, with our partners. Um, that are not the acute case that, that are.
They would be, well, they wouldn't be subject.
All right. I know on the local public safety coordinated council over the years, there's occasionally been, you know, a time for discussion about that, you know, with. A hospital, with law enforcement, with you guys, you know, talking about things and I, it sounded challenging. I was just wondering, um, with Chris's many years of experience while he's still here or Emily, whoever, um. Can you just briefly for, just our education, tell us what is that and where are the challenges?
Biggest challenge. So and there's some legislation or there, there's some proposed legislation around this. So civil commitment requires a person to be found to be mentally ill. And so that number one, I have to add that. And number two, have to be considered dangerous to themselves or to someone else imminently dangerous. And, and or, or unable to care for their basic needs, which means like they're starving themselves to death. They're not drinking water. They're harming themselves in some way. That's, that's the new, that they could be injured or killed as a result of that. And so it's, and so the language that they're trying to change, because they put such, they screwed that down so tight. That it was incredibly hard for judges to find somebody committable, you know, that they would say that they would commit the person. Because if they had to show an imminent risk, like, well, if they weren't actively harming somebody at that moment, then it wasn't imminent. And it became very, very difficult. So, um, then this was a way of sort of controlling the flow of people into the state hospital. It took commitments because they didn't have beds for these people to go to. So they took, they tightened that to the commitment. So now they want to relook at that. And I think, you know, I wouldn't want to speak for the DA and the judge here, but they would probably welcome, uh, some loosening of that. Where it wasn't, you know, at the, at that second, they had to be dangerous. So some legislation around that. They would screen, they would not commit people that were under the influence of alcohol or drugs, even though they may be. Clearly mentally ill, uh, they would say, we're not going to try to find that it was, maybe it was due to alcohol and drugs at that moment. So we're not going to commit them. Because it was the alcohol and drug use. So I, I would really like to see that because in those, in a lot of those situations, they're no less dangerous. Just because they were using alcohol or drugs at that time and, and that shouldn't just automatically rule them out. So that's an area there that I think they could. They could work on as well. I think there is some talk about that. So, um, this would increase or make it, uh, commitments more available. But you're going to have to have places for people to go when you do that, so.
Uh, with the terminology of imminent or the language of imminent being used, uh, is there any statistics on, you know, yeah, three o'clock this afternoon, it wasn't imminent. At one o'clock in the morning, it became another issue and there was a suicide or a homicide or an assault or whatever.
Does it, does that happen? Yeah.
I mean, is there any statistics that are, that are kept on that to help?
I don't know if the, you know, it would be tough to track, you know, because you'd, you'd have to have a starting point like, um. Did this, when did this start? What was happening at that time? So I don't know.
I think that is some of our concern is the mental health providers, right? Like we, we have. Concerns about this person, you know, mental health status and that they could hurt somebody, but we're put in this position where we're like, man, it's not really imminent now. But we, in the back of your mind, you're always thinking like, it could become imminent at any minute. Um, and that's why we do lots of outreach with people that we're concerned about. And lots of law enforcement contact and, um, you know, just try to support them where we can and meet them where they're at to try to keep them out of that imminent. Um, situation. Um. But yeah, it's a difficult position because then the community members see, well, oh, symmetry care isn't doing anything about that. We are. And we're trying our best, but the laws make it such that our hands are tied in a lot of these situations and we are, we're doing what we can to. Um, you know, follow the law and keep people stable, so.
Well. It's a tough job. Make sure that your staff, when you're going out on those calls, out outreach and everything are safe.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, I know somebody personally that's about to endeavor into that world and, um, we all know the movie, um. What was it? Patch Adams, where his wife went on a call and didn't come back. So it's, it's, the threat is there, so.
Yeah.
Safety doll.
Thank you. Yeah.
Well, these guys have a quick.
I think I have it pulled up for you as.
Yeah. Okay. So this is just our contract with Harney County. Um, so we're just going to do a quick overview. Um, the next slide is just kind of the overview of what we'll do. So we'll talk about our letter of approval. Uh. And the COA is included in here, which is our certificate, certificate of approval. Um, we have, I, we included two of them, the CCBHC one, which is a, we are one of thirteen certified community behavioral health clinics in the state. Um, and that is a more rigorous, um, criteria to me. Um, and then our certificate of approval with O H A. And then we'll go over our GOBE chart audit. So GOBE is the behavioral health side of, uh, Oregon Medicaid for our region. Um, so we'll talk, we'll go over that. Talk about quality services to the jail that we, um, provide. We'll look at the performance standards and client functioning. And just a quick note on here, part of the, our contract says that we will do, um, patient surveys or client surveys. And monitor those over time. So in two thousand and twenty four, on our average score for all the questions that we ask on that survey. Was a three point, sorry, four point three seven out of five satisfaction. So five would be strongly agree with all the questions. Four is agree, three is neutral, two is strongly, sorry, disagree, one is strongly disagree. So I mean, we scored very well in that at a four point three seven. Um, and then we'll, our financial audit is in here. I probably will not review much on that financial, but, um, it's in there. Um, okay, the next slide is our certificate of approval.
The same auditor we have.
Oh, there we go. Um. So in this packet, the first one, and I don't think you can probably pull this up though, but, um. And but it's available to commissioners and Judge Hart.
I have all those attachments if you want.
Yeah, you guys can go there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
But, um. So we have our CCBHC letter of approval and that does expire in September. We're working with them already on. Um, we've done a desk compliance review, um, with them. And we were very pleased that we only had three red marks. And honestly, they're going to be easy fixes. One of them, the picture didn't show up well, um. And the, they had to see evidence of something in our E H R and it just, I don't know why it sent it look like that, but it didn't look it. So, um, one of them is, I think I put, forgot to push save on one of the policy updates that I did because I'm like, I know I wrote this, but it's not in there. Um, and the other one is we just, um. We have different timelines for different certificates of approval. So I didn't put the specific CCBHC timeline for service plans. In the policy and they wanted to see that. So that's just the, those are the three. So those are easy fixes. Um. And then it lists up here, so our certificate of approval with O H A was, those are all the services we are approved to do through O H A. I'm not going to go through all those because I don't want to do death by PowerPoint today, but, um.
What did y'all do before there was an O H A?
Good question.
That's a monster.
Yeah. Right? Um. Okay. So then the next page is our GOBE financial audit, or sorry, not GOBE financial, just our GOBE audit. So GOBE had, they did a audit in August of two thousand and twenty three, um, and they did a follow up on that audit. Last year to make sure that we were actually doing what we said we were going to do in our plan of correction. Uh, we had four findings. Um, and in this, you can see what our response is to all these findings. A lot of them, they ended up dropping a lot of these findings. Because they either couldn't find something in the chart that we could go show them where it was. Um, and so, and they approved our plan of correction. And then they reviewed us, so it's right here. They reviewed to make sure that we were still following that plan of correction. In November of twenty four and, um, and they found that we were still following that and doing a good job. So that letter's in here as well. And then they will be doing another audit, um, this year sometime. Um. So that's that, those, the GOBE audit. Any questions about that?
That was, I mean, you guys are doing good.
Thank you.
They must have the mission. We must find the four things.
Yeah. Yes. Um, and then the last thing is our financial audit and we have a clean audit. Patty was at the board meeting yesterday and heard them talk about that. Um, I will not go into that.
There's no.
You guys can leave there if you want to. Um. And then the next slide, or sorry, two slides. There we go. So quality services provided to the Harney County Correctional Facility. So, um. These are some of the things that we do, we, on top of crisis services. So Ashley Banner Dawson, um, who's our psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, she's also a family nurse practitioner. Um, she worked with Aaron Todd early this year, um, to help him with some psychiatric medication reporting that needed to be sent to O H A. Um, so she helped him look at that, identify which medications were psychiatric medications and, um, send that reporting so it was accurate. Um, we do the twenty four hour crisis service, services for inmates. Um, Kayla, Kayla hasn't, I don't think she's gotten to do this yet, but I have in the past, um. And Kayla will start taking this over. We'll do it together probably, but, um. Uh, we will go into the jail and give inmates their long anti, long acting antipsychotic injections if they, they need them, if they're prescribed. Um, and that's something I just always keep on my schedule for them so it doesn't get missed. Um, and then also we have gone in before and done labs for inmates so that they can go to like a residential facility or a, an acute. Um. I don't know, like, you know, that psychiatric treatment facility. Um, so we, those are services we provide. Um, I have done mental health assessments in the jail before to get people to, um. Residential treatment with Jason, um, and our A and D staff do that quite a bit, actually. Um, so, yeah, and then Ashley has also performed SUBLOCADE injections. So SUBLOCADE, I don't know if you guys know what Suboxone is. Um, Suboxone is the medication assisted treatment for opioid use disorder. So you're fentanyl addicts, you're, um. So she has gone to the jail to give SUBLOCADE injections. Those are. She likes to do those ones. I, Kayla and I can do them. They are just, they're, it's a gnarly injection. It's like a gigantic needle. It has to go right under the skin. And, um, yeah, so, but SUBLOCADE works very well. So Ashley goes in and does those and she does do psychiatric visits for those patients that she has. On SUBLOCADE in the jail. Um, so we provide those services as well. Um. The next slide, do you guys have any questions about that?
Hmm.
Okay. Next slide is our performance standards. So part of the contract is that we have short, short and long term goals. Um, and that's our strategic plan that Chris is going to train me how to do. Um.
Good for a couple of months.
Yeah, it's so good for a little bit. So, um, and part of that, so we'll just go over some high points of that, um, the fresh start program. So the fresh start is the, um, coffee shop, um, that is, was built to serve addictions clients so that they could, you know, build skills. And be more functioning in our community so that they can help other, um, businesses.
Transition to full time.
Yeah. So we've had two employees transition to full time community employment, um, from that program. And three more are preparing for further improvement right now. Um, so that's really exciting. Um. So, yeah, so there's job train, lots of job training goes on at Fresh Start. There's also like housing training. I didn't put that in here, but, um. So some of our Fresh Start employees live in a apartment complex that we have and there. Is the manager of that is a certified recovery mentor and she does like housing trainings kind of with them like, hey, you need to. Keep your house up, like, and make sure you're vacuuming and let's go shovel the snow and things that, you know, it takes to be a good renter. Um, so she's doing that training as well. Um. Another area in the, our long and short range goals for strategic plan is expansion of services through community education groups. So we do lots of prevention activities with the school and there's a community one we usually do at least once a year. Um, so there, we do dances which incorporate a lot of prevention and educational like, um, activities at the dance. Um, so that's fun. I've talked about those before. Um, there's an adolescents' girls group that we do, um, weekly and that's open to the community. Um, and then we've done community groups with the hospital on, um, nutrition and wellness. So just to kind of help people. Develop healthier lifestyles, so. Any questions about that? Okay, the next slide is our satisfaction surveys. Okay, the next slide is our satisfaction surveys. So we had an eighty percent return rate on our satisfaction surveys this year or in twenty twenty four, which is great. Usually we're sitting, it's, that's been one of our goals is to get a higher return rate on those. Um, and are usually, we set it about sixty percent when I started tracking the return rate. Um, so seeing eighty percent for twenty twenty four was exciting. Um, so this kind of left with the down and dirty basically of what each question is and how we scored on those. You'll notice that all of them, we scored above a four um out of the five, which means that clients generally agree or a little bit more than agree that all these questions have been um successful. Um, so one of the questions that we really focused in on last year was the question number four, did I improve as a result of the services I received? Um. So we just feel like that's really important. Like, if people don't feel like they're improving, what are we doing, right? Um, so we wanted to focus in on that and we scored three point, sorry, a four point three seven on that one, which was great. And then the other one that I think is important is question five is would they refer a friend to symmetry care if they needed help? And um, for the most part, everybody agreed with that and said that they would at the four point four two out of five. Um, the last two questions, question six and seven, don't apply to everybody. Um. So, and I think people get confused whether or not they need to answer those questions sometimes. So I think that's why those two get a little bit lower of a score at times, but um, yeah, any questions about that?
What was your return rate in the past?
About sixty or less. So, yeah.
Well, we catch them when they do their updates. They have to do an update every ninety days, so it's part of their packet.
Yeah. Yeah.
It helps.
Well, and I think we just kind of got all of our staff to kind of focus in, hey, if you have that survey, number one, make sure they fill it out. And it is an anonymous survey, so we make sure that they have a safe place to do it. They can write their names on it if they want to, um, but they don't have to. Um, we prefer that they do it in the waiting room and then just give it to the receptionist. And we also have a Dropbox they can put it in. Um, so if they don't feel comfortable turning in, they can just put it in Dropbox as well, so. Yeah, um, okay. So client engagement attendance is another um area that we focused on last year and we still are focusing, we're always focusing on this. Um. So research shows that if someone once they drop below eighty-five percent attendance to their treatment, uh, they're not getting what they need to get out of the treatment. So we um try to keep clients engaged in their treatments so that they're closing successfully. Um, Ryan Gunderson is attending a master's program that we can state right now. So this was his project um to kind of work on. So he revamped our, we called our engagement policy. Um. And we implemented that last January. And we saw our no-show and cancellation rates are dropping. It's not super significant. From twenty-three, it was eighteen percent no-show and cancellation rates. And last year we dropped to sixteen percent. Right now with the data we have, and again, you know, it's early in the year, so. Um, but our no-show and cancellation rates right now are at ten percent. I hope that trend continues. Um, we'll see. Uh, but it does seem like the policy we have now is the best that we've had in a long time. We've always had a policy on this and it's been really hard to find the balance between, you know, helping people engage and uh just letting them and not addressing it at all. Um. So, um. What happens in this report? So every week Ryan runs a report, an engagement report, and we look for clients who have missed five or more appointments in the last ninety days. And um in January last year, when I first ran this report, um, there were twenty-four clients on that report. Um, so this is kind of shocking. Uh, but now we're down to about four and a half people on average um hitting that report every week. This week, um, first time ever, we had nobody on it, um, which is great.
What's the reason, you think?
I think it's because we're paying attention to it. Um, we also have a watch list that comes out of it. So people who have, um, if they're frequent, if they've been on the engagement report before and they have two services in the last ninety days that they haven't attended, um, or if they have three or four and they're getting close, that's why it's the watch list. Um, we share that with our clinicians so that they can talk to them about why it is they're not making it to appointments. What are the barriers? How can we help you with that? Um, you know, and sometimes they're like, oh, I don't have childcare. We're like, well, we, you can, is there a different time that would be better? You can bring your kid in with you if that's, you know, appropriate. Um, so just working with them through simple solutions sometimes is helpful, so. Um, in twenty, so the other thing that has improved since we started the newest engagement policy, um, is our successful completion of treatment. Um, so when somebody.
Which is, and it's very.
Very specific, yes.
Say that it's, the number doesn't look high, but it's because there's like twelve options and only one of them is successful completion of like all treatment. Well, sometimes a person may leave, maybe improving, they leave, or they may get transferred to another program. Those wouldn't count.
Or they move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so there's some various reasons. So it's a pretty tight number that we look at and we will, of course, we want to see that go higher, so I guess we are starting to see that.
Yeah, so in twenty twenty-three, we were at twenty-seven percent were uh treatment completed. Not, uh, a lot of people leave against uh professional advice. And sometimes I think that's because they feel like they have gotten better and then they just drop off the pace of the earth and form care calls. But we don't know that they're doing better, so we have to put that they left against professional advice. Um. So that's difficult. Um, and then in twenty twenty-four, um, that went up to thirty-eight percent. So that was really awesome to see. Any questions on that?
Looking good.
Um, and then the PHQ nine data, this is um the last slide. So this is a, the PHQ nine is a depression screening tool um that we do at assessment when somebody first comes in and we do it every ninety days of their assessment of states. Um. So we, this kind of helps show how clients are improving in their functioning. Um, so over the course of twenty twenty-four, we had two hundred and twelve clients who had two or more PHQ nines measured in a year. Um. So there were some clients who like drop out of services before we get another PHQ nine, so it doesn't include everybody. So but on average, the score improved by two point one points, so showing that their depression uh symptoms are improving. Um, and then sixty-nine percent of the PHQ nine questionnaires improved over the course of treatment. So that's good to see. I was thinking about this data after I ran it and, you know, um, I just ran it for, and Kayla and I ran it. Um, we ran it for twenty twenty-four only. If I would have had more time, I would have looked into each individual case to see like when their treatment episodes ended because a lot of these treatment episodes are still going. Um, so that percentage I would expect is probably a little bit higher if I had captured, like, what their PHQ nines have been into twenty twenty-five, so hopefully we capture that, so. Yeah, any questions on that?
So, um, just kind of, the nuts and bolts are, I think you guys have the draft of the contract. Not sure of that, but I think the county does. Does that sound right?
Judge would know.
And anyway.
Do you have the draft, Judge?
Um, was it in this email with attachments? Is it not? I haven't seen it.
It would have been what we saw two years ago. The, the contract language that's in there. So wherever, we just need to locate that, um, need to review that. You know, I think you need to address that um e-person section at the end of it because I'm going to be retiring and Emily's going to be in my role. And so just determine if you want, just want to include Emily in that or if you want to eliminate that. I don't know if it's a requirement you have that in there.
Um. So is that, is that, we need to present that to you then for?
Either way, I, we need to find it and then we need to um basically get signatures on it prior to July one.
Once Holly finds it, if she can send it to all of us.
You found it last time, Patty, but I don't, that's, that's my big memory from two years ago, so.
I could also look for it.
Yeah.
How many, how many individuals did symmetry care service last year?
Well, like on a given day like today, it could be between two thirty, two fifty. It fluctuates a little.
I believe we saw, we, so five hundred, remember that data? There were over five hundred that came in for assessments over the course of the year. Um. That doesn't mean, so a lot, sometimes people are assessment only, like they come in for an assessment, it might be mandated. Or they're just like, hey, I don't, I feel like there's something up, but, but they don't meet criteria for a diagnosis. Um. Which that rarely happens, but um, so we do have some who close out because of assessment only. Um. Yeah, but.
That's something where you can work with.
We'll, we'll look for it.
Yeah, let us know. I mean, I, I don't think we have it, but thank you.
Do you know the last time it was signed?
Yeah.
Was it about this time, two years ago?
It was signed June seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
In, we'll go ahead.
Do you do uh telehealth services and what is that with fire?
So we have a room set up for that. Uh, and we have an intake assessment person that does the initial intakes and assessments typically over telehealth. The rest of us will do them as, as needed. Um. And then sometimes for ongoing individual work, some people want to do telehealth and we use Google, um, or uh Google meetings, you know.
Yeah.
Same old link. Yeah.
Is that helpful for some of uh our community members that live in the farther unincorporated areas?
Yep, that's exactly. But that's the population who mostly uses it. Although a lot of those individuals prefer to do it in person. They're like, I come to town once a week anyways, so I want, and it's just, you know, they, they like to do it in person.
We prefer them, if they can do individual.
Yeah, we, and that's kind of been our philosophy the whole time since COVID hit, like, while we understand that some people need telehealth services. It is best for your mental health to get out of the house and come in and socialize and see people face to face. Um, we kind of encourage people to do that if they can. Um, we also do a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, so we do some in-home services. Um, we had one client who had almost like agoraphobic symptoms. And so we'd go to her home to see her and um, get her help in the community with us as part of our therapy. Um, so yeah, that it's.
You don't do any of the clean the house, shovel the walk, the services to people's homes, do you?
Not typically, I mean. Sometimes that's good activity therapy though, you know, lots of commonest together. Um. So uh I have had people say their goal was to like clean out a storage unit because it's just weighing so much on their mental health that um, and then they said, I'll know my mental health is better when I'm able to get the motivation to do that. Um, so. Yeah, but yeah. Any other questions?
In the letter of agreement between Symmetry Care and OHA, it talks about your guys' service area is Harney County, but per federal and state standards, you'll serve anyone in crisis. And it talks about individuals residing outside the service area and presenting in crisis. And you guys aren't residential, right?
We do have a residential.
You do?
Yeah.
Well, what is, what does that look like? Of, of the five hundred, let's say, per year, how many of those are Harney County residents? And what does it look like if we do provide service to other people?
Yeah, so somebody could be traveling through, right, and they're in a crisis. Let's just call the person in the jail as an example of them. But if they haven't been in the jail, then, you know, we, we do provide services to them. Um, and do the other part of your question, like out of county, or maybe there's somebody in Grant County that wants to get services here. We have taken a fair number of those. We try to push back a little bit if they have available services in their county. We'll ask them about that, um, or in Christmas Valley, it's another hotspot that we get called about as well. Or get referrals from. Um, and they've had struggles getting their program up and running, but it now is up and running, so they do have a resource there and they really can for those individuals. But we do see them and so, um. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's our rule. We just need to be available for people that are in our sort of catchment area, but there could be somebody traveling through the circuit.
And I would say out of those five hundred people, ninety-eight percent of them are Harney County residents.
Sounds like a lot. People, the population.
I know.
I mean, it's good that you serve them, but that makes me think.
Well, we have a lot of different services, so it's not just, we don't just do therapy, I mean, there's skills training, there's community help worker around. It's like nutrition coaching and weight management and stopping smoking. And then we have support employment and, you know, we have a coffee shop and we have a ranch.
We have uh peer groups that people just go and socialize at and.
So we can kind of meet them where they're at. It's just not like, oh, one size fits all, you're all going to see the counselor, um, and that's all you do. Uh, so.
Well, I think, sorry, I was just gonna say, I think you also have to remember that when people think of mental illness, you think about worse mental illness, right? And we get the run-of-the-mill depression, situational things hit and people are just overwhelmed and they just need a little bit of help for a few months. We get that too, um. I mean, that's probably the majority of our cases. Um, and so I think when you think of mental illness, it's more, it's not your scary things like schizophrenia by four and um psychotic people. It's, it's everybody. It's anybody who has prolonged grief from the loss of a loved one. Um, so it's lots of things. Your ADHD kids, we see a lot of those. Um, so, yeah.
I also like thinking about your comment of completing a task to improve mental health and trying to think if you guys had anyone with leather working experience. Because maybe we can read my no-ho.
Yeah.
I don't know, Tim doesn't. Uh, I'd like to say that, um, you know, thank you to Chris Signer and all he has done. He is, you know, he came, I mean, he's from here, but he came highly credentialed and having experience, you know, outside the county before he came back here and he led when Harney Behavioral Health, a county department of mental health uh was here, he was the director of that and then led the transition to become a private entity, which was very interesting, I'm sure. And um, and has, you know, made quite a success of symmetry care and, and how it provides services. Um. So it's been quite a journey, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's been great. And looking forward to retirement by that.
You gonna stick around or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
He'll be on my speed dial.
Well, it's, it's been good. And the, the programs where it's at and Emily and Kayla will do a good job when I'm gone, so.
Well, thank you, Chris. Thanks, y'all.
That was it. So now we um find a, we can all find the contract, we can take the work out.
I'll look, I'll look at my email.
So I make sure I, we'll send that out for Emily.
Did you find that?
Holly already found it. She's on top.
So we have a, we have a PDF copy of it. We can convert it to a word or whatever for editing and.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
My comments deal with symmetry.
Well, you can make public comments come in if you want, sure.
You don't want them to be here, then. Oh, are they all going to symmetry care?
Are you, do I need to stick around or?
Well, are we going to have a question and answer from the public? Do you want to address these?
No, I can't address them.
I mean, do we want to present them to the?
I don't know, maybe, however you decide.
Um. I don't, yeah. So normally I, I, I like to allow uh open conversation. I don't want it to get into a big, a big back and forth or whatever, but um we were presented with, from a member of the public, some questions. Um, you can keep them brief, please. I'll just let you go ahead and ask them.
Well, I would like to read my, my letter because I don't want to get off track, okay? Is that, is it fine?
How about if we add it to the minutes if you could summarize your questions?
Okay, we can do that. I don't want to blindside Chris though, you know, and I appreciate the comments you made today because um, over the years, I've had some experience with your clients when I was running a business here and I've also had a lot of interaction with law enforcement and, and that kind of thing and, and uh. Uh, I was here today. Uh, my name is Barbara Kennedy. And um, I wanted to say that I was going to be speaking for myself today. I don't feel alone in my comments at all. I would say that there maybe needs some popular um improvements on your side from the impressions that I have differ from what you was said in certain.
From the impressions that I have differ from what you was said in certain comments today. And so I do have some issues, issues. When Symmetry Care was formed, it was assumed that the business was intended to serve this community. Harney County has enough mental health and substance abuse issues to warrant such service. We also celebrated the growth of our local boy in terms of, of Chris Sager. Somewhere along the line, the state made the decision to distribute their mental health clients across the state without informing the communities impacted. Harney County and specifically Burns and Hines have been affected. Per one former officer of the state mental health hospital in Illinois, letting us function through evaluations. And you're saying that's not true. That's what, that's different from what I've heard from you today.
I, it, it's, it is, that is different, and I think what they're referring to, and I can see it from law enforcement. Is they typically do the three seven O the evaluations, but they're also providing the restoration services and treatments. After they do the three seven O or even during while they're evaluating the person. So it's, it's not untrue what they're saying.
So I have issues that would like to see dealt with because it's. Okay, so I spoke with Senator Lynn Finley about the issues that had surfaced. When I was running a, a business here in town and his response was that the state wants to send their mental health issues to small communities. Because they will not complain. Okay? So I really think it would be good to have more of this type of conversation of what is really going on in the community. I had, I, I have a list somewhere in terms of like twenty different issues, but I just wanted to address it to you today. Part of it is the Symmetry Care lean so heavily on taxpayer paid services. And in terms of law enforcement and Harney District Hospital, I would like to see you have your own safe room. I don't think the nurses at the hospital should have to deal with some of your clients. And in one case I heard about where they kicked through the wall and were trying to escape. You know, that's pretty violent and.
You can always talk to me, not here, you can talk to me in my office if you want. So when you, when you talk about your clients, those are not our clients anymore than they're the hospital's clients. And so I think, you know, when I hear that, we don't license, we don't own or operate the hospital, we don't license it. That's gone, that's what they do. And so when they do that, they have, and they understand this, they have responsibility for that. And I understand it's tough for the nurses, but that's tough in the jails. And when they're dealing with that too, so and it's, and it's tough for ours down. So it's all our responsibility.
Okay, so I think the issue getting away again, my, is that. Your, your staff does not address. Clients that are intoxicated or under drugs, seditions or something like that. You do?
Every day.
So that's one thing I wanted to see specific in the contract that they do that. Okay, because the community impression is that your, your staff does not.
I don't know if that's a community impression or not, that's not the feedback that I get.
So on our certificate of approval, it clearly says that we are certified and that we in fact do. This was approved, approved, and take care of people with alcohol and drug issues.
So the other issue is housing and when they began their discussions about housing for low income. It was for low income seniors and then they switched over to workforce housing. And then eventually five of the nine apartments became Symmetry Care clients. The new vet center is expected to, to import more clients. Under this arrangement, the tenants require more services, but the landlord, and this is not. Against you, it is against kind of the type of funding in the organization with Hub. Where because they're a five oh one C three, they apply for and they. Gain the status of being exempt from property taxes. So in other words, the clients require more services, but they're not paying through property taxes for those services.
But that is need that they cover some services. So and, and usually people don't qualify for HUD unless they are. Okay, the apartments that I'm talking about. So our, our clients who are in there, which again, we don't have all five apartments full of our clients anyways. There are nine apartments. She's talking about that five beds for. Yeah, yeah, but. So those clients do still get services from us and we do serve them, we go to their home and serve them. And we help support them in that housing and we have at least weekly services with them. And we communicate with Heidi at Hub if there's issues going on with them. So we, we are giving them services.
But, but they, but the hub is exempt from paying taxes.
That's not.
Provide those services. Okay, so I guess the thing is, I was wondering if. And, and I've had this discussion with different people in terms of. Once your clients go through and they're, they don't have family or network here. We, we also have the issue of those clients that, and. You know, you're not looking at them as, as I am. I, that's where I think a lot of our issues differ, is I'm looking at them as your clients. And that.
You think you can switch that up? You think you can switch that up and start looking at them as a community and they belong to.
Not when they're imported, not when they're not residents.
Yeah, we have, we have a patty ten bed residential for instance, two thousand and six. And we have a five bed foster home that has had our people there. For years, like since I started here, like three of them. Those are our.
The youngs are community members as far as.
So there, there's, so. Yeah, there are some people that do come in and, and, and show a residential program and. And they typically leave, but some choose to stay and that's a choice that they make. But that's the very small number of people that we actually serve. And so, yeah, it's not about importing people here. We operate these programs for years in this capacity. So maybe it's the community that has a bias.
Well, what I'm saying is that, that maybe there needs to be more communication with the community so that those. Ideas are.
Yeah, you know, I'm not opposed to that and I've done some of that over the years. I don't see things changing though, right? Like I said, you can, you can talk to me, you don't have to do this in county court. If you had questions or concerns, you could have.
But you're going for a contract. And I, I was thinking that there needed to be some changes in the contract.
The contract is, is.
It's the mandated services that the state mandates the county as the mental health authority that we provide. So then the contract just transfers those responsibilities to Symmetry Care.
They don't, they're not paying us, the county's not putting money into that. That's just a delegation of that.
The services you're talking about really aren't, like we said earlier, these are the safety net services for. You know, people who don't have insurance or are under insurance. And while we do services for those people, the things you're referring to are for people who mostly do have insurance. So it's not had anything to do with this contract.
I'm gonna, oh, I, I will say, you know, just in my conversations around town, I will, I will. Agree that there are misunderstandings by the public that, that don't understand the services that Symmetry Care provides. At this point, I would ask Ms. Kennedy that if you have any further questions, you go, go talk to Symmetry Care directly. And I don't think it's not a topic that, that doesn't need to be discussed. I mean, because our, our community is concerned. But for now, I think we've covered it, okay?
I think we all have to remember too, that our services are confidential, right? And so there is only so much that we can share with the community. And so if somebody comes up to me on street and I've had this time before, like, well, what are you guys doing with that guy? He looks like he's crazy. Like I, I can't say what's happening, but I can tell you what the state laws are. And how those can be, make it difficult to take care of people at times. But like I said, we're doing our best we can under the constraints that the state has put on us.
Do you offer any kind of a, a local open house once a year or anything?
We don't, we don't do that, but I mean, this, the whole thing about our. You know, it's, it's hard in community mental health because you have mandated clients and you have a real mix and, and so. You can't, you're not gonna make everybody happy all the time and I get that and I understand that. And so we've spent years sort of building up the program and, and, you know, just by doing good work and, and. Basically trying to stay off the front page as best we can and that, that's, that's been the way that we go about it. So. You know, I, there's, I'm all in favor of like good PR, but I don't wanna. I want it to be a real thing, you know, based on what really happens. So. And I don't have any problem talking with people about what actually takes place, but I hear stuff like this. It's not really informed about what we really do or how we're funded or that's, I think that's. The kind of stuff that I'm like, I would prefer people just ask me, you know, about that.
All right. Thank you for your time. Okay, opportunity for public comment.
I, I guess that a lot of the information that I have is from my opinion has come from law enforcement and I. I guess I really need to talk to Chris. I had intended to do so earlier. I didn't want to blindside him in this meeting. But I do think there's some definite issues in the community and that comes from working in the community. I have clients come to my business and we're very open.
While it's a topic that affects our community, and I'm not gonna say that it's not a topic here, but I would invite. Mr. Signer basically just said, you know, anybody, if anybody has questions, to go talk to them and. I know I myself have gone and talked to them. Again, it's not, there's a lot of services there that are beyond. What the county has contract for and after having a good visit, conversation with him. I came away with a lot different perception, myself being, being a community member. So I would encourage others to do the same. Any other public comment? All right, no old business, new business. And we're scheduled for the, at eleven thirty, so we'll bypass the resolution and go to. Appointment of Enrec Forest position. Is that attached in this, Holly? They have a letter of interest from. John Woodward, John Eric Woodward. Writing to express my interest in serving on the Harney County Natural Resource Advisory Committee, Enrec. Filling the forestry vacancy as a resident of Harney County with a background in logging and pre-commercial thinning. I believe I can contribute valuable insight and experience to the expertise to the committee's mission. Of advising the court on natural resource needs and priorities. My experience in logging and pre-commercial thinning spans more than thirty years during which I have experience in logging. But I'm not gonna read all that. I think it, with his background, he, he does bring. Knowledge in that area and in that commercial, that. Specialty. So. And I don't think there's any others, any others interested for the Enrec?
No, he was, he was one of a handful that Enrec recommended. And upon reaching out to them, he is the one that came and expressed, he came to the last meeting, he expressed interest. And I was glad to see that letter in there because I, I emailed him that template and then he never emailed me back and I thought, shoot, maybe he didn't fill it out. So I think he'd be a good addition.
His wife sent it in.
Any discussion?
Sounds like he's highly qualified to, to bring that perspective to the Enrec and I'm pleased that he's interested in serving.
Make a caveat here beforehand, obviously our Enrec, our Fair Board, our, our Budget Committee, our Planning. Committee, Board are all volunteers. And we thank all those volunteers for their time and, and helping us stay informed on topics and perform the duties that are required of each of those. Entities. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to appoint John Eric Woodward. To the Enrec. Second, a motion's been made and seconded to appoint John Eric Woodward as the forest advisory vacancy. To the forest advisory vacancy position on a Harney County Natural Resource Advisory Committee, Enrec. Any further discussion? All favor signified by saying aye. Aye, and opposed, and motion carries.
And I think it might be worth noting that there are one or two other openings on that committee. I was finally able to get into the files and I talked to the chair and. There is a general position, at least one general position open.
Is that in a large type position?
At large, the previous person had. BLM committee experience, rancher experience, forestry experience. And that's the position that's vacant and there's also a vacancy for a landowner, I believe. So there's two vacancies for that. And I think Holly might already. Posted those, so if anybody knows anyone that would like to serve on that.
All right. And I'd like to thank you for writing up minutes more or less of those meetings. I know it's a lot of time, but. I'm more informed now than I had been in a long time on what they, they discuss, thank you.
So I know in the past, one, one of the county employees was assisting with minutes for the Enrec. Did that discontinue or do you know about that?
I don't know. I just thought I should probably take minutes. And I doubted one of those volunteers wanted to be the secretary.
I remember when I had the both advisory committee, I just wrote them up after the meeting.
There, there might be an option. I know there was a staff member that was basically doing it. Comp time type of a situation, whatever. So if that need is still there, or if you would like to look at that or discuss that bar.
Oh, un- unless we need to do something different, it works fine that way. I don't mind doing it. It helps me kind of remember that stuff, especially. With that particular committee where we're talking about a lot of the law enforcement plan stuff, it's helpful to go back through it, read those. Notes, you know, tech minutes, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, just let you know. Might be there if you need it. Next topic is the Fair Board. Well, there's a current vacancy on the Fair Board. Due to a resignation, so we need to appoint an individual to that vacancy to fulfill or to. Fill the remainder of that vacancy. Do you know?
Are there any people online today?
Of these people?
Or any people at all?
There are.
I was under the impression that the Fair Board. Had hoped that they would be able to interview, because never do they get three letters for a vacancy. It's like pulling teeth to get one.
Have they had a chance to do that yet?
Nope, they were gonna do it at their next meeting, April first, I think, and they were hoping that they could interview them and make some resident. Recommendations or notes on them. And I would be open to that, especially because we have three. I thought that was pretty handy when we did our appointments and we could actually talk, have a conversation with them.
In my early years on the board, in fact, it happened to be with the Fair Board. They, the Fair Board manager at the time would come in on the day that there was appointed, we, we received the letters. We, sometimes the people would be there and I would ask. Based on your knowledge as fair manager and the Fair Board, we've got these three great people, they have different, you know. Experiences and, and strengths, is there any particular need at this time you think that would, that would fill out that board? You know, as it should be on, on all aspects, because you know, how do you choose, right? And we, you know, so I would ask that and that was kind of an old practice and maybe sometimes a fair manager. Kind of an old practice and maybe sometimes a fair manager doesn't want to be put on the spot, you know, but on the other hand, you know. Uh, as I looked at those, I don't know those people, they look really good. One of the things that I find is. Challenging for the fair itself is that we've got a lot of rodeo and livestock people on the board. And people in the community that work on those things. And the rest of the fair. That I guess comes under the fair manager to do the entertainment, the exhibits, coordination with four H and, and just open class exhibits. And, you know. All that stuff that's for, that aren't the other two uh things is really not, um, that's what's. Been in decline and part of it's our funding, but, but not all of it. And we used to, sometimes there have been fair boards where you actually had one or two people on the fair board. Who that was their passion, that they were connected to the people in the community that come out of the woodwork to help. And, and you know, also have a passion for those things. And I don't think we have that now. And I don't know if we're gonna have it. You know, with the people that, that come forward or if the fair board even wants that, but um. I would like to see those aspects of the fair really um, come forward again because. It's a, the rodeo, the rodeo, it's a fair and a rodeo, and then you get your livestock, which we all support, of course. And um, besides just having vendor tables and um. Little tiny exhibit, it would nice, be nice to have some other stuff going on, you know, and that takes a lot of work and it takes somebody who says, you know. Great, you guys are doing good on the other stuff, I'll work on this.
And they had a conversation at that last Fair Board meeting, kind of to that effect because the person who vacated the seat. Had kind of taken the lead on the static exhibits. And so they had a. Proposal from HDP, basically, to help. Facilitate the open exhibits, but they had discussion about when they, when they get a new member on their board, they'd like someone that can. Fill a different niche than they already have filled with their other members.
Uh, I would propose that we table appointment for a fair board until the fair board has a chance then to review and conduct interviews and. And put forth a recommendation then.
I would agree.
Uh, next topic then is, and we have about fifteen minutes, we may have to interrupt, but we have about fifteen minutes until we have to go into the, the uh. Uh supplemental budget hearing. Uh, building fee schedule discussion. Do you, background, can you start us off with some background, I guess, on fees and how they're determined and?
Um, well, I'll start off with the fact that we didn't have a building fee change. In this county for approximately twenty-two years until last year. Um, pretty much, I think they got more, so.
For the record, excuse me, for the record, is Rick Stouffer, who is a building, building official.
Sorry, I should.
That's all right.
My fault. Um, the uh. Uh, our building fees are based on, you know, we try to average them with other counties, uh, things like that. Um, so building evaluations are based on. Uh, for residential, they have a basis that comes out of ORSs and OARS. Uh, commercials, permit fees and planning fees are based out of the same OARS, but they're specific to. Uh, the difference between residential and commercial. Uh, commercial are based on ICC valuation table. Residential is too, just. There's a real clear statute in ORS that directs us on how we are to complete. The fee process for those projects. Oh, international code counts.
How can it not?
We all do. Yeah, that's about it though, there's. I mean, I could really hit into the weeds with it right over the book, so.
Okay, so, but I guess the bottom line is your, your, your fees are based on statute and administrative rule.
Yes, that's set forth, state of Oregon provides statutes and administrative rules. And our code books, actually, if you were to get into, I brought a, the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, which first all, commercial structural work. Refers back to the OARS within the code. So when you look at fees in here, it'll refer you back to. Uh, the specific OARS and ORSs to understand that. And it's literally just a couple of paragraphs.
When you came aboard, I mean, I know you have a lot of experience on commercial and residential and a lot of other. Of the subcontracting areas. And. You saw that our fee schedule was out of whack and you approached us and you, you educated us a little bit and then we raised the fees and we brought them in line. With uh, state services as well as, are you saying neighboring counties or other counties you're aware of follow similar?
Yeah, I tried to use neighboring counties more because. Out of these rural areas, it costs us more to do the work than it does in a more urban area. Where you may just be doing the city of Eugene or, you know, we have a lot of miles to be put on to do one inspection. We're trying to reduce the, the need for fee, fee expansion above, you know, consumer price index. Uh, by implementing uh virtual inspections and trying to find more efficient ways to do this to help contractors move forward quickly. Uh, quicker than they were before.
Um, and so that's been kind of a shift in that, I think you said the Harney County fees had not really. Kept up and it'd been twenty-two years since they changed and. Um, while I know nobody likes to pay more for fees on stuff, I, I would like to say that that. Recurring theme of Harney County doesn't charge enough. For services that cost us just as much in the personnel expertise, the time and the materials and the effort. That, when it's done by the state that they charge or when another county charges that. So even though it. In hard times, nobody likes fee increases, I support it because it's the right thing to do. And the fact that our building um, office, our building department. You know, is moving forward and, and does more than just Harney County and, and the onsite septic is gonna, you know, be taking on three more counties. We are providing services to multiple counties, always keeping Harney County's. Uh, you know, clients in line, but, in mind, but um. It's a change in the paradigm because we have a different level of expertise and experience here in our building department and a vision on how to provide services. For us as well as Eastern Oregon because the state's not, in some cases, providing those services in a timely fashion. Because they are limited on their staff, et cetera.
Well, and before I even interviewed for this job, I knew I had an interview for it. I did just a small deep dive into the fees, sort of looking at them. Um, provided them to the building department, said, your fees are, I don't know what's going on here. Partially for me too, so I kind of knew what I was getting into a little bit. Um, but you know, we found a lot of issues when we got here with. No training, no reference material, no vehicles. I mean, we had a real limited. Uh, way that we were able to do the, the job here over the years. And then the state. Who is, I'm not bashing the state, they, they've done a good job for us, but. The state coming once or twice a week, spending two or three months to approve a project. Um, none of that falls in line with the work that we're mandated to do by the state. We only have ten days when we get a, a set of plans in for house to have those returned or have questions. Uh, so that we can move this forward. Part of the economic development of any county, we're part of that. How do we help make that quicker, faster, more efficient and do it? With a, a money amount that we can grow that department and do the things we need to do, provide those services quickly.
Some of the things that I think that are worth noting is when you talk about the twenty years. Of no fee increases, I, I think part of that, if I'm understanding correctly, was like the one-time fees. That a person has to pay and those hadn't been increased to keep up with the cost of living, they, or inflation. But then the other part of that is, and I just want to be specific on the record because I think it's important. For the community to understand that the ORS says, on a, on a building permit fee, for example. They give an estimated value of that building. And then there are the ICC. Building valuation data tables and the ORS says whichever value is higher. And so I, I think that's important. That's not something that was just instituted. And I'm kind of inferring that maybe for twenty years, that wasn't done and that's an ORS. And I just think that's important to go on there.
Thank you.
The, the concern, and Rick talked me through this at length, Mr. Stouffer.
Um, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And it all made sense, but, but obviously why it has come to light is because the county has a substantial. Project in the works with the event center. And the, the fees that it is. The fees that it would pay for the permits are going to affect the amount of work that they can get done. It's a substantial amount. And so, in, in thinking about that, the fee amount is correct. But, for example, our weed department is almost self-sufficient. And because of the work they do with partners, but we don't charge ourselves, the county, our weed department doesn't send us a bill for the work that they do. And we have the Fair Events Center going on, we have a proposed jail project going on, which is gonna be a substantial build. And hopefully in the future, a school bond. And I, I can't help but feel like. We are charging the taxpayers twice. They, all of the revenues for this event center. Or for a school bond or the jail are coming from tax money. And then we're, then we're gonna take a chunk of that money for that bill to pay those fees with. And. Even though section one oh four of that, that structural code says. That the building official can modify or accept alternatives or waive any requirements. I don't think it's an appropriate position to put our building official in to pick and choose who gets it. And I, I kind of feel like. We should not charge fees to any entities that are funded by county tax dollars. Because I feel like it's double dipping those tax dollars. Um, I realize we have to balance that with having a robust building department with the training, the vehicles. And the staff, but this is something that other municipalities have done. The city of Portland, which I hate to use as an example, but Columbia County did it specifically for a fair project. Waive the fees. I don't think we should pick and choose who, in my opinion, anyone that's funded by. County taxes, whether not limited to schools, special districts or county departments. Shouldn't pay county fees to the county they're part of. And that's.
No, I'm opposed to that. I'll, I'll let you continue, but absolutely not. We can't afford it. We shouldn't pick and choose. These are capital projects. There are fees built in when we're hiring the right kind of contractors. They double check their work when they put their bid in and they, they are covering the cost of that. And the county and, and the one capital project that's moving forward at this time, which is the Fair Event Center. We just gave them all the rest of our ARPA money, almost five hundred thousand dollars. When we had competing things to consider to get across that line. And I just can't see us picking and choosing, well, there's some county taxpayer money, well, there's state taxpayer money, there's federal money sometimes, there's a lot of, and private money. And we can't afford it. We cannot afford to be doing that. And uh. I know people don't seem to understand how tight the county revenues are anymore. But um, that's cost of doing business. And I'm sorry if, if it, the fees surprise the contractor. You know, who put their bid together, but uh, no, I, I would say, sorry, I don't. I don't want us to, us or our building department to be deciding which kind of discount or. Or change in, in things they'll charge for these services.
Well, and that's why I tried to focus on. Overall for county entities, because I think if you focus just on that fair project, I agree with what you say. And we've had the conversation that if a person did their due diligence and looked at those BBDs. They, they should have had an idea of what their valuation would be. But following that same thought progression. If our jail project is valued at eight million dollars. And let's say that according, because I haven't looked at the BBDs for that jail project, but if it's gonna be four times what their valuation is, which is what's happening with the fair project. Then that means that they could be paying half a million dollars in fees. Back to us as a county, which means half of a million dollars less construction that we can get done for that same work. We're going to employ a rigorous building department, whether they are self-sufficient and fund themselves with an enterprise account. Or whether it has to come out of the general fund. We're gonna have less revenues. And I, I, and I get that when we say that we can't afford to do that, but I also think that we can't afford to stifle. Building of new schools or jails because of a.
Well, I think, I think the, the place and the time and the, the avenue, should the county be able to. Help a project, even one of our own, would be when we know what we have out of our general fund to do so. But not to be messing with these um, state statute, ORS and, and good business practices. Not to do it that way. If, 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 if we're getting that money back, you know, because. We are now charging uh, the standard fees for, for the work that we do in projects. And if we find a way as county court and, and our budget to say, well, let's see if we can donate or give. Some money to this project to help it keep propping it up, we would do so in that manner, but. I mean, we've got a business model here that's just a year into it on our, our building program. And we're about to embark on our onsite septic expansion, our environmental service expansion to three additional counties. And uh, the best way to do that is the fees are standard for all. And, and you don't do that kind of a thing.
Can I interject just a comment for Christian to break? Um. I, I think the one thing that I would disagree with your last comment is that if we don't. If, if we don't have a consistent message, we don't have a consistent fee schedule. The county cannot afford to have a rigorous building program without your demand. Um, it will revert back to the state. And the, the fees and everything that they collect, ninety percent of it will go to the state. It will go back to the way it was. And then the county will be still funding it, but they'll be funding it in a way where. You're, you're trying to prop up what limited services you have and that will be coming out of the general. Because you, you're still, you're still mandated by the state to do this stuff. So, um, and I don't know in the past if, if the county had a substantial amount of money that they had to put into the building department out of general fund, I don't know about that. Um, but. The way that we're building this now as an enterprise fund is that we're trying to expand it and grow it into a self-sustaining program. And the fact that nothing was done for all of these years, it's built quite a big hill for us to climb to make that happen. And we are slowly getting there, but it's when these projects come through that, this is why we have those funds. Is to administer the, you know, the administration of the program, the vehicles, the training, the, which we had no training at all. None, there was no training when I got here. The reference materials, there, there's so much that goes into what we're doing, recruiting. Uh, good staff that, so as we grow this, we can provide these services the way we're supposed to. And, and who knows what comes up in the future for additional uh counties that want us to do work for them. So, you know, that's what we're looking at, but we have to have those fees to do that work. And. I, I, I always, like I've told all three, what I don't like is. The rules for everyone else except for us. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that you expect private business to come in here and pay those fees, but the county doesn't have to pay those fees too. I think it's a. I don't think it looks good. And uh, that's just why I still look at this. I think it's important to have a consistent message about how we do things and. You follow those state guidelines.
And, and we had had that conversation, I thought about it a lot. About even having the conversation because it, it, it could be considered a black eye for the governing body to even consider. It's good for you, but it's not good for us. And it wasn't until I thought, but it's almost like we're double dipping those tax dollars. Our taxpayers already paid the tax money, whether it was to the state or the feds or us. We have to compete for grants to get that money back in a lot of these instances, which I also don't agree with. And then their tax dollars are gonna go even less far if we have fees. And the building department is gonna be self-sufficient this year anyway. Aren't they gonna be at a net positive for the end of the year?
That's a, that's a cloudy picture. We, we, that, things. Things were done over the last year trying to make it better. And I think we have a better view of what's gonna happen, but. We're, we're trying to build this thing and understand what these numbers look like as we go along. Um. Uh, when I, when I got here, like I said, there was a lot of stuff that wasn't being done. And so we're. As we fix these things and we bring our fees up and the things we have to do, um, I think come the end of the year. We're gonna have a better idea, but you know, I know that our fees are, the amount that we've taken in is more, is more. Does that still cover? No, because I'm still on extremely limited basis for being, being able to do. No, because I'm still on extremely limited basis for being being able to do. I'm holding off on buying books right now because I really don't have the money to do it. It's books that are needed and things that are needed. Um, for us to do our job.
Right now, in a very preliminary preliminary. Um, draft of the proposed budget, the building department combined with environmental services. Is a is a positive nine thousand dollars uh, at the end of the budget. But that's not a whole lot and that's and that's with a little bit of a transfer built in from from general fund should. Should it be needed? Um, um, so so it's pretty tight and really for all practical purposes, it's. It's pretty tight right now. You know, as time goes on, hopefully. Their beginning fund balance for that department grows and then they have revenues to. To real, you know, to dip into, so to speak, if needed um, at budget time. But right now, being a new program, for the most part. It's it's pretty close. It's pretty tight.
And one of the things I would just, I know you gotta go to another thing here is that. Part of part of the thing, and I mentioned this to you the other day, outside of all the administrative and the vehicles that we need and all the stuff we need to do. We also need to be starting a reserve fund because as we all know, the economy goes up and down. Building could crash in six months. And we have to be able to build a reserve so that we can maintain what we've built. In those times when we're slow instead of having to shut it all down, so that when if things start picking up. We're we're right ready to keep keep things going and and push that process forward. So. It's planning for the future. There's a lot of stuff involved.
And that'll be reflective in your beginning fund balance.
Yeah.
Um, I would prefer that that we. Continue to go for a couple of years and look to see what your beginning fund balance is before we start to create.
No, absolutely. I'm just saying that's part of the fund process we've got now.
Are you really? Do we need to get to this other? Because we can put a pin in this and come back to it.
Can you go ask for your Hini to step in for me please? Don't think she's online.
Hello. Um, so. Um. If I could ask you for your assistance a little bit, having not having to have having not had to do a supplemental budget yet. Um. We just need to go into um. Is advertised for today, right? Eleven thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we need to go into? Uh, basically.
It's it's called a hearing, but I don't know what. The governing body needs.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna.
You have to, you know, announce that the public hearing is open.
Yeah.
And then there's a resolution to sign.
Okay, so I'm gonna at this time at eleven thirty four AM, we will recess regular county court. Uh. Session and open the public hearing. On uh, supplemental budget for a supplemental budget. Um. So having said that, and it's been announced, it's been it's been advertised as required. And our purpose then is actually kind of as we were previously talking, it was about the building fund two thirteen. Um. In order to get us through the rest of this year. With the increases in the building program and the environmental services program. Um, we had. More revenue to bring in than than what was allowed by statute. Is that correct? That's the the ten percent rule?
Yeah, so we did a previous resolution and appropriated. Right under ten percent because they had additional revenues um. In order to appropriate more for the hiring of the. Environmental. Specialist and transportation expense. We are transferring. Funds from general fund. To building fund. And in order to appropriate that money because it's now over the ten percent of their total expenditures, we'd have to do a supplemental budget.
So the the proposal is um, an increase of twenty five thousand dollars to personal services. For the. Hiring of an environmental. Services specialist, health specialist and then another twenty five thousand dollars to capital outlay to. For vehicle and and other uh, material supplies needs that we get. I think primarily that's just for the vehicle though. Think there's existing funds in the current budget for materials such as computer and whatnot.
Yeah, we're only appropriating the personnel and capital.
Okay. So uh. Being that it's a a budget hearing. And I haven't seen anybody else step into the room, but is there any public comment? Um, no public comment in the room. I don't see anybody. Online or any chat. Comments. So we'll close public comment. And then the resolution to make that. Effective. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero six in the matter of adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. To but uh, building fund two thirteen be resolved that Harney. That county court of Harney County hereby adopts the supplemental budget presented. At the supplemental budget hearing held at eleven thirty AM on March nineteenth, twenty twenty five and the total sum. Of five hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred and seventy four dollars and that's that would be the new.
Total expenditure.
Total expenditures on on that fund.
Yeah.
Um, now on file at the office of the Harney County Clerk, uh, be resolved that the additional amount. For fis- fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty five.
Mine says twenty twenty four.
It should say twenty twenty one.
Yeah, okay.
You might have a whole cop copy because Holly corrected it.
So it's supposed to say twenty four?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's supposed to say twenty.
I was gonna say, we're talking about next budget. Um, so can you reprint that?
The one on.
That was the one where you. Yeah, let me just, I have it.
The one on the cloud is correct.
Yeah.
One posted to.
So be it resolved that the additional amount for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty four. And for the categorical purposes shown below are hereby appropriated as follows. Personal services. Uh, to three hundred and fifty two thousand, seven hundred and sixty nine dollars, which is an increase of twenty five thousand dollars. And capital outlay increased to twenty five thousand dollars, uh, which is a previously had a zero. A zero um, amount in it.
And this is in response to resolution twenty five oh five. Where we were talked about taking fifty thousand dollars to cover the startup of E Q, correct?
Yes, yes.
But we discussed. That it says in the minutes, we clarified this is a loan and the revenue generated from the work will be returned to the general fund. But revit revenue generated in that enterprise account cannot come back to the general fund. Isn't that correct?
We have a transfer built in. The environmental health money needs to stay within environmental fund. But I think the building department will have an excess that we can justify transfer back to general fund with fifty thousand. Because next year. We're going to. Will have two separate departments within the building fund. Right now, it's coming will fall under building. The environmental health services, we folded out. It'll be its own department.
Same fund still with two departments.
And so the building. The building fund should generate enough revenue to make that transfer back. And that's how it's. Gonna be.
I was just curious because the way I interpreted those ORS. The revenues in the building fund cannot circle back and come back into general fund.
So I'll I'll be honest, I haven't looked at that. To my understanding, it was just environmental health monies that had to stay within that program.
Building funds are have to stay in that fund also. Just like electrical has to stay in electrical, but.
Well, this would have been a conversation I should have had a month ago. I mean, I'm just saying like.
Well, but.
But the the premise on under doing this, though, was a loan from general fund to the building fund.
Yes.
Wherein repayable. In the next budget cycle.
Yeah. I mean, you guys could come in as a commission and take all the money out of my department and put it in the general fund. Um, I it's my job to fight that, right? And so. Uh, there's a municipality in North that's doing it right now. They're putting it all in the fund and it's. Gonna come back, but when we have uh, things with supplemental budgets, we are allowed to make those things where we can say. We're taking a loan to expand this. We just have to show what it's for and how we're doing it. That's and that's what the transfer is for. But by design. What you and I were talking about is. That we can't, you can't likely we can't have a half a million dollars sitting in there. You guys can come and say, well, we need this for general fund. We're just taking it. That's what we can't do. But what but we can show through auditing process. That we took a loan, expand this program, and we're paying the loan back. And that's how we do it, just like buying a vehicle.
So during during the budget deficit, um, did the general fund not receive a loan from road department?
Yes, but that is outside of this.
Yeah, the building, the building.
But I mean, it's a loan from one fund to another though, right?
Right, but it was. On a. Can't think of the word that I want to use, but yes, it was a loan, but there were certain. Things that we had to put in step to make that happen, or this is just. Kind of an agreement between the parties. Um. There was formal documentation that the court had to sign as a loan from the road department. Um. Now that I've had like a second to kind of digest it, the argument could be like. This revenue that we're transferring to the building department is not. Building revenues.
That's exactly right.
So. I would think that we would. Not have any problem with being able to transfer that back, just the the same dollar.
Yeah.
We're still, we're still taking a loan to increase the building department footprint. And paying that money back. That's all of this. We're not, we're not creating fees and then paying money out of those fees to pay ourselves back. We're we're taking a loan to to create to enlarge our footprint in the building department and we're paying back that money.
If expressed as a loan, that will be a debt. Expense to the building department, which can be paid out of those fees. So I I I wasn't opposed to it. I voted for that resolution. I just. Because I've looked into more ORSs, I wanted to ask because I knew those funds couldn't come out of the building.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you for asking.
It's more just the control of keeping those monies in those enterprise funds. So that they're protected from.
From being used for other purposes.
So being used for, that's all.
I move to accept resolution in twenty twenty five oh six.
I second. Uh, motion then has been made to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh six oh six. In the matter of adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations building to building fund two thirteen. Um, as described in the amounts described. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, Logan.
Thank you, Treasure Hini. Appreciate your. Advice. Um, okay, so with that being taken care of, is there any other, any other discussion? Or we adjourn the public hearing, the supplemental budget public hearing?
Yeah.
Alright, um, hearing none ends, we shall adjourn the uh, supplemental budget hearing and reconvene back into regular county court. Um, pick up, I guess, where we left off. Is there any other discussion on the building fee? The scheduled topic discussion?
Yes. Uh. There was, there was discussion about building a reserve fund so that a department can be sufficient through slower times. But I feel like. That's the responsibility of the county government to make sure and sustain those departments if they have some difference in their. Revenue and expenses for a year. I feel like if every department kept a reserve fund, then we'd have so many reserve funds, we wouldn't know what to do with ourselves. It's our responsibility to fund a rigorous building department. And an- another example I thought of was like when they pulled wire over when they moved buildings. If, for example, you have to have a permit to pull wire, you wouldn't. The building department wouldn't pay for their own permit to pull wire. They'd just pull the wire. And I think where it's our responsibility to be frugal with tax dollars, I I am not in favor of charging. Anyone that receives county tax dollars. Fees. I would waive them all for schools, special districts, county departments. If we if we pass a seventy dollar, seventy million dollar school bond. Which is a big shot. That's about what they're looking at. If we pass that. That could be upwards of a million dollars in fees. If we have a million dollars in fees sitting in the building department. It it is not gonna benefit the bottom line of the county because those funds have to stay in the building department as well. They should and electrical. Fees have to stay within the electrical department. I understand why they do that. I just.
Yeah, I would like to know how how the re- the reserve built up in an enterprise uh, department. How we can. Uh, benefit from that at times, you know, leave a reasonable reserve, but if they become extremely profitable, so to speak. You know, really. The reserve is building. I would like the county to be able to access that. Is that possible?
So. Allowable expenses from those departments back to the county can be can be charged through administrative costs. And HR costs because we're still providing those services to that department. Um. Like the road department or or any other uh, outside fund entity that's not part of the general fund. So so that's about the only thing I think I know of that we could charge back. From the county to that fund as a as an authorized expense, basically of that of that program. And I agree, yes, if we end up with a fu- with a with a beginning fund balance or a reserve or whatever, that's a million or two million dollars. What are we gonna do with it?
Well, and I think that. It's a. Big pie in the sky at this point, but to have that conversation. I I, you know, as an example, if we had five hundred thousand and you guys had a need to save a job or whatever it is. I think that at that point I would go to state and I would sit with, you know, the people of state and say, you know. Where where, how do we maneuver this? How do we make this happen to? Share this in a way that benefits the community and I think that's a super important thing to do. If we're lucky enough to get there over a lot of years where we have some reserve fund. Um, there's nothing wrong with that conversation at all. I I don't. I don't think that a enterprise fund should sit on money just because they could say, no, you can't touch it. I don't think that's fair. I I think that. You know, uh, given some reduced fees things for things, community projects, I really don't have. Huge problem with doing some sort of small reduced fee. I think when community needs are there and we have the. The ability to help with that. I think we just have to follow the rules so that if we get audited. By the state that we're able to show a track of. How we did it and that we did it.
Well, perhaps if you look in it through, look into that through your channels and perhaps Judge Hart, look into it through whatever channels. You have uh, to pose the question and. Uh, for whatever you're willing to share, what's happening in another county where they're trying to get some of the enterprise money back? Enterprise fund money back and.
Yeah, well, there's a city of North right now that has. Is taking all of the building department fees and putting them in the general fund. I think the state just. Cause I was in the meeting and this all came to life and state, all the state people.
Yeah, that's.
Cause they they're actually looking for my position up there and I just asked, I thought that a gallup there. Because they, they're actually looking for my position up there and I just asked, I thought that a gallant there was taking the position. And they all started laughing when I asked the question. That's what it's come up. So. I, I, it's just one of those things that I, I think it's great to get us to a point where we can help. I, I think that's fantastic. Um, but we gotta make sure that we're. Dotting i's and crossing t's so that we doesn't come back and cause a bigger problem.
And, and for any, um, for Harney County and any other counties that we service through our programs. Um, what are your thoughts at the moment, at least on discounts for? County. All right, I, I heard you say that earlier and then I thought I heard you say something else.
No, no, I'm hard against it. Um, I, I don't like the look of it. Um. And I just, I, I did discount the, the fees for the fairgrounds by ten percent. Um. I don't know if it was right or wrong, but I felt for me, looking at the timeline for that project, this is down to about five months before fair. And the community needs for that project, that I felt that it was okay to do that. Um, in my estimation, it might come back to.
So you're saying that was extenuating circumstances where you felt as a. Small discount or a, a, a certain discount in this case, but you don't see that as a practice to do moving forward?
No, I think it's a bad practice and um, I, I will always. Uh, look at the circumstances if you guys ask me to and, and look at the needs of the community. And, you know, and take that into account. Um, so I think that's important. But as a practice, no, I think we have to have a consistent message. Um, and uh, Commissioner Frank, one of the things you said earlier was if we were to do something in our building, we wouldn't. We would just pull the wire. Well, we're actually gonna have a plug put in down in our new office and the con- the electrical contractor, which we have to hire. Will pull permit for work in our office. Because that's what the rules are. We're no different than anybody else. If you're doing it in your home or we're doing it in our office. If it's not something, something that requires a permit that Chad can't do. Which this is, we will hire a licensed electrical contractor as per code. And they will pull a permit to do that work and it will get inspected by a commercial inspector. Because that's the correct way to do it.
I served on the uh state level construction contractors board for four years and I. Am familiar with the building codes division to some extent. And again. They. Now, there's a lot of bureaucracy, but their rules are there for good reason and, and they must be consistently, you know, upheld, whether it's licensing. You know, and, and standard fees and things like that to uh really for good practices and fairness across the state. It's true.
I, I see both sides of it. Being, being a retired law enforcement professional. I see the and understand the, the statutes and complying with. Complying with the laws of the state. Um, at the same time, I, I also get, you know, we're taxing ourselves. So to speak, and, and um, and not just us, but any other um. Taxing district, you know, uh, school district or the parks and rec or Burns and Hines, whoever that might be. I. It, it's, it's retaxing the same dollars in some respects. I, I, and I, and I, I see that point of it. Right now, based on our conversation, I wouldn't be ready to make a decision. Um, either direction. Uh, I think I'd like to propose that we table this until next. Uh, county court session and do some research on. Because it sounds like in the statute that you cited, the OAR, that there is that latitude. By, by a governing body or by a entity. So if there is that latitude and we can find out some or figure out some. Happy medium or whatever in between, then that might be the way to go. I, I don't know. But at this point, until I have a chance to, to look into this specific topic further, um, I would, I would propose that we table it.
A few other things that I would say, and I didn't want to get into the, the weeds on one particular project, trying to keep it at thirty thousand feet, but. Commissioner Dorro mentioned the ARCA funds, which I brought up in conversations too. Almost, almost a half million dollars in ARCA funds that we dedicated to the fairgrounds. Which enabled them to go from just getting this shell erected to getting into phase two, which has to do with the loon twos that'll cover the livestock. But now if they pay an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fees, which by all accounts, their contractors. Could have known them. But they can also argue that they, looking at the fee schedule, that's what they assumed the fuse was gonna be. Because they valued the build at four million dollars. However, the bottom line is. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less work we'll be able to accomplish with taxpayer dollars if we pay those fees. I think the goal of the county is to provide the best services to our citizens we can. And. I, I don't, I don't agree with charging ourselves. I would waive those fees for all. County government receiving entities and, and I think it is a time sensitive issue. Because for that build in particular, to start construction, they need to get permits immediately. So they need to. I- i- if we, if there was an agreement that we should waive all fees now and in the future for. Harney County tax dollar beneficiaries, including the schools and the jail, special districts, then that's one thing. And if we want to decline that, then they'll write a check for their fees, I guess. But I, I respect Judge Hart's desire to table it. I would be more inclined to make a motion and if the motion fails, it doesn't mean we can't address it in the future. When people feel like they've had more time to do their due diligence. As the liaison to the, the fair board, I feel like I would have to make a motion just to do my due diligence. Anything else?
Uh, I guess the only thing I'd say about it was being someone from both sides of the fence, I'm on both sides of the counter. Um, the due diligence for the fees of this project should have been done long before it ends, but. I mean, I can't imagine. Uh, being, doing large projects like this and not knowing exactly what the fees are gonna be to the penny before writing the project. I just can't, I can't fathom it. I just cannot believe, I mean, my last, my last job in the private side, I had fifty guys. I had projects at UVO and O'Shute. Um, one of them was six stories, four blocks, six story industrial space. Three hundred eighty unit apartments and a six story uh parking garage. I can't imagine not knowing what those fees are gonna be before you start. Because your company is, is gone after that. It's, that is the due diligence and total respect to you, Commissioner. That is the due diligence of. If, if you're new to the game, maybe that's the mistake you make in the beginning. But if you've been doing this for a long time and you, you're a builder, you do all this before you even.
You'll only do it once because you're gonna eat those cops.
That's exactly right.
And I, hindsight's twenty twenty and I think they were under the impression that they had a grasp on what their fees would be. And I wish that we could have utilized the resource that we have in you and had you look at stuff, but.
Well, but all they had to do was make a phone call too and that doesn't seem good.
Well.
Our, and our fees are, are published, right, on the website?
The fees are, the fees are published. Um, uh, but um. Anybody that's bidding these projects, that's dealing with building person around the state, they know. That there's more than, it's, it's like being a plumber and only looking at plumbing code. There's references to everything we do in multiple programs. We don't just look at one source or make one phone call. We do our research, we do our due diligence, we know what the facts are, that's what we present our budget on, is the facts that we have at hand.
It's, it's unclear from our application. That ICC DVD tables will be taken into account, but as Mr. Stauffer has told me, and I agree. You, you can't have everything on a one page application and I understand that. And I, I think if someone was new to the game, they would legitimately be caught off guard. I understand what.
Yeah, I don't want to get too specific, but I was not under the impression that this contractor was new to the game. Um, so let me just say that. But um, I'm definitely not in favor of making this this broad policy of all these things. Including school bond and anything that we build. The county can't afford it and the school is its own entity. We give SRS money, it's stuff, but no. I, I'm sorry, that is too big, too big a change for us to make a, a decision on today if you're gonna make a motion, in my opinion. For a whole new approach on that stuff. If you feel like the fair board's under the gun for a one time ask or something, I guess you could, but. Um, no, we, we're gonna need a lot of uh input onto the, the impacts on the county. The county is barely making it right now.
I, uh.
I think, because I've been here longer, I just, I know the seriousness of our situation. I see Judge Hart. Knowledge increasing each year and yours will increase each year. And I'm just very concerned about doing something like that.
Um, I, I have to point out too, and this is internal, but we also already made the, made a concession within our. Uh, administrative cost policy that uh administrative costs on capital projects would be. Negotiated basically below what the standard rate is to, to other departments and their expenditures as well. And, and that, I think, went down from a hundred and something thousand to, I think, twenty five thousand, one time cost. Um, to help for that same reason. And I, and I understand that we're, you know, with the, the. The topic that you're talking about on a, on a full countywide scale from schools to parks and recs and burns and hinds. That was an internal policy uh of taxing ourselves internally almost. So, so I get that. But, but I think we've, we've already made concessions on, on this project. Um, and this is just, I'm just throwing this out there. I'm not going in any one direction right now because I really, I would really like to get some. Other conversation with people on this before we make a decision. Um. Yeah, uh, just.
And, and please bring back where money would come from, uh, for things like this at the next conversation.
Where, where money would come from.
We're making concessions on these things.
Well, but.
The impacts to, what the impacts would be.
I think, I, I think the budgeted revenue for building permits for this coming year is a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. I think that's what the budgeted revenue is. And so if, if we waive fees such as this, it's not taking money away from us. We're just not realizing those profits. But we will realize it through other ways. For example, if we put in a new school and we can hire and fully staff our hospital. Or federal agencies and our other higher socioeconomic jobs, it's gonna generate tax revenue. And that's what I feel, I mean. I, I feel like. A motion would not have support and I think I respect. The commissioner and the judge enough to know that they like to do their due diligence and I think I would forego a motion. Because I think it's a conversation they're willing to have. There's more things that they want to investigate. As much as I am in support of waiving all fees, I think the discussion is probably over.
Thank you, thank you. I'm getting very stressed out.
Personally, I would say that your, this new event center is also gonna have the opportunity to bring in. More funding for the fairgrounds. It should be able to bring in more events, more, it's gonna be an enclosed arena that could bring in. Shows and other things that haven't been able to do before.
It will, it'll generate more revenue, so if we don't take the revenue and fees, we'll get it on the backside with the increased revenue of the fair.
So we're, we're also our own department that has to get funded and build our program, so. I'm pretty much standing firm where I'm at, so.
Is your, and, and just out of curiosity, though, when you're, in your projected or your proposed budget from your department for, for the next fiscal year. Are your uh projected revenues from fees include? The fees from the fair, from the event center? Uh, it'd be, those would be on top of that?
Yeah.
All right, um, I'm gonna. I'm gonna make a motion that we table this topic. I, I really would like to, to um, do some more research and whatnot. So I'm gonna make a motion that we table the topic of, of building fees schedule, uh, fee schedule until next county court session.
My second.
Motion has been made, second to table this, this uh topic to the next county court session where we can do some research and find out what, what options are available, if any. So, um, with that being said, with any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Stating.
One abstention. All right, um, moving on then, um, meeting schedule. We have, uh, the first budget board meeting is April eighth coming up. And then the two subsequent uh sessions are the twenty ninth and thirtieth. Uh, regular court and I'll, and I'll open it up for other meetings of note in just a second. Um. Regular court dates as a reminder that we decided last session because of other conflicting meetings. We're gonna do our meetings next month on April first and April fifteenth, so it'll be the first and third Tuesday of the month. Next month.
Will you go back to that first one?
April.
April or the March twenty seven? What did you have on the twenty seven?
Well, I hadn't mentioned that one yet.
Oh, sorry, I was.
You were looking on my paper.
I was looking on your, I was trying to get up to speed.
Um, so, so county court dates, April first, April fifteenth because of conflicts. Uh, budget, April eighth and the twenty ninth. And then I had other just. For note, just to, to let the commissioners know what we're working on, but we do have a land, a landfill attendance meeting. Uh, it's not a, it's not a public meeting. I'm just letting you know that we have one going um for March twenty seventh at two P M. We're gonna bring, we're trying to get the landfill attendants and the landfills more engaged in processes and decision making. Um. With the county, so they're coming in. Um, and then just for general note, fair board meeting. Annual or monthly fair board meeting is April seventh and the N RAC meeting will be April first. That's all I have for meetings.
Will you say the budget meetings again, please?
The eighth.
Eight, for what terms?
On the first one? Thought the first one was like four hours. Um, April. Eighth. Yeah, it's scheduled from nine to four. I don't, I don't project it will need that long, probably. Um, just a few hours for that one. The first meeting will be the uh. Reading of the budget message. I should have already presented the proposal, or hoped to have already uh presented the proposed budget by then, before then. But normally, if not, then it has to be uh presented at that time. And then we have to tentatively approve the five departments that are involved in the CAFA grant. And that's uh H R clerk, assessor, tax assessors, office, uh, G I S. And. Treasure. So, um, those five have to be pre-approved so that the uh, uh, assessor can get the application. And um, get it sent in for the CAFA grant. And then that will give a few weeks in between for the budget committee to review and look at the budget and decide if they have any questions or what their concerns are. And the hope is that since we've taken care of most of the. Uh. Decisions on appropriations that uh we will be able to review and get through the budget in a day. If not, then the thirtieth is available as a second, as a continuation. Any other meetings?
Um, the meetings that I've kind of, I'm looking at is, uh, I guess, um. Judge, you and Rick Paul have a C act meeting uh this Thursday, correct? I might zoom into that. Uh, I've got a housing authority meeting with Malheur Harney. Uh, it's kind of a follow up on some of the housing stuff. It's a Zoom meeting. I'll be doing that on the twentieth at one. Um, there's an Eastern Oregon Counties Association Zoom meeting on the twenty seventh at nine of March. As we head into April, um. Lots of little things, but um, I will be attending here locally, the uh. Range Land Fire Protection Association, R F P A Summit here. It's a two day thing at the Elks Lodge. And I think that's it. For the main things. For the main things.
On Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, there is scheduled to be a water hearing in Salem that I'll be attending, but they've moved that date several times. So hopefully it'll stay on Wednesday the twenty-sixth.
And is that for legislative bills or for the water division five twelve, or?
It's not for five twelve.
Okay.
It's for the newest bill thirty-eight hundred that they're working on, that is a real substantial bill, and it has funding, but it also deals with regulation.
Cool.
And so. That's planned for that, and. I don't, I don't know how open to the public it is, but there is a walkthrough of Beerman's. Plant that they're putting in on Monday, the thirty-first, from one to two. And so I bet if anybody wanted to go see what they have, um, they've got expansion, I don't think it's open to the public, I'm just telling the commissioner and the judge, um. That might be interesting, because that'll hopefully be an economical boon for the county. That's all I have to now, the next meeting, there's a rack meeting after our next court meeting, of course.
Um, when is that?
The rack meeting is scheduled for April second.
Well, yeah, that's right.
Any other meetings, the note? Um. Kind of along those same lines with Beermans, I did tend to a walk-through out at the biodynamics pellet mill, um. What's today, was it Monday? Was that yesterday? I don't remember, anyway, it was this week. Um, met with the owner of the business out there, myself, our economic development director, uh, City of Tines, uh, the assessor, and um. Uh, a couple other people. It it's it's kind of a cool operation they got going out there, um, I, he, I will mention that he. Uh, suffers from labor availability. He could, they're, they're several months behind on orders right now because he can't process enough product because of labor shortfalls. He has a crew of about six right now and could use ten more people. But uh, the short of it is he can't get either either people that aren't interested, or that he can't get people that pass a drug screen.
Excuse me, what business is this?
Biodynamics.
Oh.
And I I feel like that's an issue across the board and across the state, and I don't know what, especially as the county government, I don't know what we view to address that.
It was, it was very eye-opening in that respect, because as we're trying to develop economic development in Harney County and entice or bring business to Harney County. If one of our own existing businesses is having a hard time finding labor. We're gonna, any anything else that comes in is gonna have that same difficulty.
That's, I'm sorry to hear that. Do they work shifts, or they just?
Just a day shift, okay.
Other than that, how's it going?
With them? Um, alright, he's got, they've got plenty of square footage out there in that building that he's um, we're gonna have another follow-up meeting. On the second, I believe, and um, just to brainstorm and discuss some possibilities, um. He's basically open for expansion of other industry types that might need some square footage within that building. The lot itself, he has quite a bit of acreage out there, so other options out there that he might be, i- i- it's all just brainstorming right now, just to uh. Just to see what other kind of uh. Uh, expansion he might be able to do, or bring in or entice part of our economic development. But, um. All the machinery, all the equipment out there that's in that building is all, I mean, you can tell it's fairly new, and um. And it looks like they, they they make several different products, and it takes them a day in between products to to clean out and transition into the um. Another product like they do, they do a bird feed, that uh pellets, that that they get some kind of a mix of chicken. Parts, I don't know exactly what that entails, but that comes in and then they mix it with alfalfa. It gets mixed together and then makes the pellets, and then they have um, a bagging line for pine pellets. That are used for, I think, uh, like, uh, cat litter. Um, and then they transition into just a straight alfalfa pellet. And um, it was interesting that they, he mentioned that they could, they could handle all of, all of the products from Harney County. Um, and pay the same cost for it, basically, as from what I'm understanding. Um, which I would think our local producers would have less transportation costs, and these are all, I don't, you know, I think there might be more to delve into in this than. Than just that simple statement, but um, it's, I think it's a lot of good potential there. It was interesting, it was an interesting walkthrough, what's that?
Can't find enough labor.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Um, they have their own uh plant, uh biomass. Hot water generation plant, which is basically bought from the same company that that the High Desert Biomass was bought from. Um, same technology, and then with that, they they generate hot water steam to, um, I think it's just hot water. Uh, basically for their drying, because their product has to be dried. The hay has to be dried before they can put it in pellets. But it doesn't, they don't have any other electrical or energy needs, because they produce their own heat from that. So it was, it was interesting, it was an interesting walkthrough. Um, budget, continuing on with the budget, trying to get that proposed budget done, um, I will, wanted to kind of discuss it a little bit, um. All the departments look good, except for general fund. Um, with my proposal for cola at four percent across the board. I'm looking at at least a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit right now.
And why is that?
We, we, we have a couple hundred thousand less in revenues this year, but those revenues were specific revenues from like, um. Uh, brownfields and the fifty thousand for the energy resilience planning process. And a couple of other things that.
I haven't looked at it in detail yet, but. Our, my guesstimate on our beginning fund balance is about three-hundred-thousand dollars less than it was last year, and that's what I think the shortfall is. Because our, our expenses aren't going down, um, our revenue, you know, property tax goes up approximately three percent, but we're low on collection. Um. But if if the beginning's fund balance. That I've guesstimated is correct, we're, we're gonna be around eight-hundred thousand versus we were one point one in this year. So I'm gonna recalculate that after March payroll and the things that I'm coming up.
When do you really know? When do we really know?
When do we really know what our beginning fund balance is?
July first.
I know, okay, I just, just thought I'd ask, I mean, it's, you have to do your best to try to estimate, you know, um.
Well, so in order to get it to balance to zero, I may have to recalculate from a four percent to a three percent. Now, I know my, my proposal at the last budget review meeting was a four percent across the board with no step increases. But if I have to go back to a three percent just to get it to balance to zero, we're still not gonna have any money for step increases.
Um, is there anything we can do to help you? I mean, I don't wanna get into the stuff I don't know about, but I just.
Um, we have a, we have a a staff meeting, department head staff meeting this afternoon, and I'm gonna hand out um where we're currently at. Cause I I wanna review by department, just to make sure that there wasn't any materials and supplies that were miskeyed. Uh, we, we do internally do all the, all the H R portion of it, the personal services part of it, so I just want the. The department heads to know where we're at currently, what the situation is, and um, review those materials and supplies. With a, with a, a reply back by Friday afternoon, and. My goal was to get the proposed budget out to the budget committee two weeks prior to our first budget meeting, that might end up being a week, week and a half, by the time I can get through this and actually get it budgeted to zero, but.
Thanks.
I know you're concerned about that four percent cola, and I know the conversation we had in that meeting. Was around four percent cola, but I think it was implied that our intent was as much as is possible.
Absolutely.
So I think people hopefully understand that.
I mean, if I can't, i- i- if I can't get it to balance to zero with a four percent cola. And I have to step down to a three or a three and a half percent cola to get it to balance to zero, it's still balanced to zero, and we don't have anything left.
Staying with social security.
So that's, that's where I'm at with it, um, we're working on it, the treasurer's helped a lot, I appreciate the treasurer's help. H R's put a lot of hours into it, um, we all had to start over and re-enter things because of the software. Wasn't working with us as favorably as we would prefer, so we had to re-enter, hand-enter all the materials and supplies. Uh, to get a a workable, an edit, editable budget, because it had locked up some fields on it.
I withdraw my offer to help you in any way that I can, now that I've heard that, no.
So, um, anyway, so, you know, and Holly.
I know, I can tell you all were rushing on it, really are, yeah.
That's all I've got, and that's all I got.
Let me ask, let me ask you something, Judge, Budget Officer. Do you think that our meeting that we recently had, uh, county court level on budget review? Do you think next year you would make it later, because more things happen or not? I'm just.
The only problem with with doing it later, and I've thought about this, I would like to push it back later, but the CAFA grant.
Okay.
We have to have the stuff available to the assessor for uh, end of April submission, I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she has to have the application in by the end of April, so we could push. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give her too short of time to prepare that application, we could push back a week maybe, but we're still, we're still beginning the budget. Committee process in the month of April, by the, probably mid-April at the latest.
Okay, no, I just, I'm just thinking out loud.
But it does, it makes it hard to to look at what a projected beginning fund balance is gonna be. Um, I guess the only thing I would say is that the proposed budget is not locked in stone. Um, after you have a proposed budget and even an approved budget, you can still make edits to it, there's, you can. You can still make edits to the, to your proposed or approved budget, so if numbers change before, before it's adopted. In June, we can still make those changes to it.
And we'll know by June, for example, if that CAFA bill passes, that will change revenue sources. If the D A bill passes.
I was just gonna say, there's other ones too that.
None of it'll be retroactive, though, will it?
No, but we would get that revenue in the coming year.
In the coming, but yeah.
Like right away, or wait till January, how do they do those things?
Uh, well, if it's, if legislation is passed, it it doesn't go into, even if it has an emergency clause, it doesn't go into effect until July one.
Right.
And then, or later in the year, October, by the time the the governor finally signs it, so I would say that they would be appropriated in the state's budget. For the next biennium, and we should get those funds, increasing funds in our. Next budget. Am I on track there, Treasurer?
I think so. Do you want me to throw out some stuff?
Sure.
Uh, just checking, I kind of asked you, um, I know you had asked for a report by our planning director and our roadmaster possibly on, um. And I'm not sure what you instructed them to do, but to have something documenting the Meadowlands' history, situation, so that when people who. Uh, own property out there, uh, suddenly come back with the questions we've had to answer time and time again, they have a resource to to read and and see. Is that moving along, or?
Um, I I need to check on the status of it, I did assign several department heads to work on that, to collaborate and work on that, an executive summary, so to speak, on it, um. That pulls from all the legal documents and the historical information and whatnot to create that, that summary, so that we had. Because it's gonna come up every year, obviously, if we especially have these high-water e- events and whatnot, um. And again, being pretty much just with budget, I haven't had a chance to follow up.
Okay, I'm just, I have a constitution, I need to call back, and I just wanted to let them know it's still in the works, um. Any update on T-Mobile Day Wireless, and is everything at least going okay, or?
Uh, as far as.
The communications capacities, uh, the problems that were happening with Day Wireless.
Heard anything.
Uh, I actually mentioned that to my dad, and he reached out and two uh head people from them called, and I gave him Don's number, so they should have at least had contact.
Good.
There is a T-Mobile meeting on, I think it is Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, because I'm gonna be gone, so I didn't put on my calendar. But if someone from the county was there, I bet they would welcome your company, the emergency services talking about changing their. S- stuff over, but it was pretty informative, if somebody had time in their schedule.
Do you know what time it is up there, a lot of meetings?
I think it's at one P M, and Roxanne Worley, the contact on that, you wanted to.
I might call her, but I probably won't be able to make that meeting, but thank you for listening.
I'm sorry, when was it?
Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, at one P M.
Three twenty-six. And when I ask these questions, and if you haven't got around to it, I'm not trying to bug you, I'd just like to. Have you had time to call about the Taylor Grazing meeting? The annual meeting we're supposed to have with B L N?
No, I haven't.
Otherwise, they just hold it when they want to, if we wanna hold it sooner or later, we might wanna ask.
At this point, as I briefed though in that last meeting, um, we can have a, we can have a Taylor Grazing meeting, but we're, we don't have any funds. We're gonna deplete the entire Taylor Grazing on predator control.
Alright, well, find out who the person is, maybe I'm just, um, okay, so update on. What I've been trying to help with this week, and that is the environmental health services, I E, onsite septic and other services of expansion. And so. Harney County has a really good uh environmental health specialist. Who has done a lot with the program, and we already have contracts with Grant and Wheeler County in addition to Harney County, so our. Our specialist provides those services, and that is to, you know, the permitting and the um inspections and the problem solving to help septics get moving. In in the building department, that's been a real issue for a long time, so we've had that going on now, Baker Union and Wallowa. So Department of Environmental Quality, the state entity that. Supposed to provide services here to the east side, their one. Up worker, who, employee who has been handling that part of the uh state is retiring, and they're not planning to to replace.
Retired.
Has retired, not planning to replace, so now we've got more counties that are gonna be slowed down for any type of, you know, building work. And um, we have our building program on the environmental health services side that is very motivated to. To continue on, so there, there have been conversations and proposals before, and so. D E Q is gonna back off, you know, by July first for sure, and um, in our persons looking at. Case load what's needed, they'd already proposed, they need, uh, they've already had many multiple conversations with the. Planning and building entities in those counties, as well as D E Q, as well as Judge Hart, as well as uh, some of the commissioners, but I said, you know, it's almost April. You'd like to get it going by May, they can do it as, do the handoff, D E Q as early as May first, if certain things are done. And so I'm in the process of making the phone calls, Judge Hart's already had some of them, but with those counties, those commissioners, just make sure everybody's aware of it. And that what we're mainly gonna need, and they've only, I think, I looked at their websites, they only have um their Board of Commissioner meetings. Twice a month, so they, they got two opportunities in April, just like we do. To get it on the agenda, and so working with um our environmental health specialists to get the D E Q I G A and the. Uh, M O U with Harney County, those need to get done in April, and that means they sign it, we sign it, you know, Judge Hart, and they're set up with just one signature. And then there are also other things that have to happen before they can actually have um our person. Start doing the work, but that's internal to them, they, they need to do it, the sooner they do it, the better, some of them are ready and some aren't, and that would be, they have to have some ordinances. And a fee schedule, and the fee schedule for all of these counties is gonna be the same fee schedule, the state fee schedule. You know, we're doing all the work now, and um, so that's gonna be consistent, that shouldn't be an issue. Some of the commissioners I've talked to are very excited about it, because they're gonna be up a creek without, without us stepping in. So there's a lot going on with that, there's a new um job description for a hire that would be someone out of maybe the La Grande area. Uh, and Union County said they have some office space they can use, but our, our person would be. Uh, and Union County said they have some office space they can use, but our our person would be, you know, the primary manager supervisor. And and director of those efforts, and so there's just a lot going on with that, so I wanna let you know that's coming, and I'll be putting out an email. At least, you know, by Monday on uh make sure that you you please schedule. Um, on your Board of Commissioner meetings, you know, the following things, here's the templates. If your um signer's name or title is not correct or anything, let us know. But I wanted to ask you guys, since we're gonna have to sign it, and they're gonna have to sign it, how does, how do you like to do that? Uh, do you like them to sign it, get it us, and then then we approve it and sign it, or?
I I would prefer, since we're the agency that's that's taking the responsibility and doing it. I'd rather have be presented with a signed copy from them to us for our final execution on it.
Okay, just wanted to check on that, and I didn't know if, you know, Commissioner Frank had been aware of all this.
Yes.
Cause there's been some emails, but.
No, I'm glad, glad you're on it.
I I appreciate Commissioner Dora that you're taking the lead on this, uh my plate's pretty full, and I'd be honest with you, wasn't able to respond to those stuff. Um, in a timely manner a lot, but but I appreciate you taking that, um, I will say that um. I- in this situation, D E Q with their one staff member in, I think was out of La Grande, but retired. Uh, had a had a pretty good backlog in in permits on the environmental health services side of side of the. Tables, um. Which which affects economic development and and house building, all all kinds of stuff that it affects. So in essence, that person re- retired and they made it known right off the bat that they weren't going to fill that position. And their advice to those counties up there were that we recommend that you partner with each other to find a solution. Was their recommendation, so D E Q created this situation and then dumped it on those counties up there. I'm more than happy and 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 grateful for the opportunity of Harney County being able to come in. Because we have an established program and to expand that program and help our neighbors to the north with those needs. The part that I wasn't, didn't like um in recent email traffic was again that D E Q was trying to drive this process. D E Q created the situation and then is trying to drive the process and pushing us into it maybe a little too fast. So so those were my concerns.
And and what I let our our folks know is, I'm gonna try to see if it can happen. With with the thing signed in April, so that a May first date, but it may slip to June first, you know, if if everybody's not getting their stuff. Done at the other counties on time, and obviously, you know, I'm, I don't want them to feel rushed, but most of them knew about it anyway, but. Um, still just trying to make those last phone calls to let them know. That we're excited about it, but it is gonna require some agenda items, and if they can get it on their first April meeting. You know, and then it gets back to us for our second April meeting, that would be great.
Um, the only other topic I would bring up while we're all together here is the flooding. Uh, we've been receiving regular uh updates from our emergency management, our emergency manager. On the flooding situation here in town, um, it's starting awful early and don't know. Don't know what's gonna end up looking like by the time the season's over with, but I want everybody to know that the county is engaged with the city. And um we're doing what we can do, researching and trying to find the resources that we need. To uh deal with it, mitigate it where we can, and uh. Get through the spring.
I know we have to get through it first, but a question regarding um there. Our emergency manager does a good job, and she got a lot of things lined out that weren't lined out when she came aboard into that position. And at one time, we had a lot of open grants and things, if, I don't know if we still have a lot of open ones. But she's, I think we're gonna need to get some, try to get some grants for some some stuff that we don't have. Cause we've been trying to beg, borrow, and steal, and people have been kind, and and all that, but both the city should look into it in us as well.
I'm um. Depending on what the needs are and how this comes out, we still have fifty thousand dollars in our um contingency line. That uh would be available if we have financial needs.
Okay, well, more more melting to come.
Yeah.
Commissioner Frank?
I attended the airport committee meeting this month. Just because I was trying to track down the airport guy and I happened to talk to Judge Hart, I knew he was gonna be there.
I missed it.
They they were so excited to have somebody, they they want someone from the county there all the time. The reason I needed to track down the airport guy is because there is a bill specific to. Burns Municipal Airport and Union Airport that would provide legislative funding. So they could not live up their fuel availability. And so to testify on that bill, I needed to talk to that guy, but that's the second Monday of the month, and it sounds like you go, so.
I've been to, I've been to a couple of the past ones, this one I'm sure I was quite tied up with budget, so I.
When I used to go to it, um, it wasn't on the second Monday of the month, and um. And the A O C steering committees were more evenly distributed, but with me being the main one that goes to a lot of them. And that'd be in the second Monday of the month for A O C day, to include the afternoons on ledge and board of directors. Um, I'm just not available, and I let them know that like a couple of years ago, and they would still send me the email, I'd say. Sorry.
Well, they they'd love to have somebody there, and I don't know that I'd be able to make that a regular deal, but I was just putting that on our radars. They, that that meeting, there was nothing that was even county related, other than the fact that. City of Burns and Burns Municipal Airport is in the county, but they said there are times when there are questions, it'd be nice to have a commissioner right there to ask him, so.
I agree, you know, I'll have it on my calendar, um, like this last time, I just didn't make it, but.
Gladly go because it's part of that C I. And maybe no. So second Monday of the month.
One o'clock, I believe it was, one o'clock. And it's like the Burn City Hall. Um, I was curious.
Yeah, one o'clock was when it was, if they hold it at the same time.
Do radio spots, I was just thinking, because I don't listen to the radio hardly at all, but the last few mornings. And I noticed there's great information on there, and I know the community. I think by and large is uninformed of what goes on at the county level, I know you have a busy schedule anyway, but I didn't know if you'd ever considered or have gone on. Like monthly or via weekly, just to.
I go about quarterly.
I go about once a year, just like they, last year I did broadband, a couple of other things that people always ask me about, and.
They ring me up about about every three months or so. I've done it over the last two years, I've probably, yeah, about. Four or five times.
If they found it, you more, would you go in more? Because I feel like a lot of this, even just candid conversation, like, hey, guys, it's gonna flood next week, open the headgates in your fields if you would.
Um, I know that some of our other elected officials and department heads go and and on a regular basis, and I know many.
She was on this week.
If you have, if that is something that you think you have. You would like to do on occasion or or frequently, I'm sure we would be fine with that and and encourage you.
I don't mind doing it in the in the future, um. I've kind of found, and I've tried to start keeping a list of topics that when she does call me again, that that I'm not just hitting the same things. Cause I seem to, I seem to rehash the same things when I'm on there, budget and B Street and Event Center. Which which Lindsay, I know, fair manager's been on there and talked about the event center. Um, but I find I'm rehashing the same thing, so I would ask that if you, I I don't mind doing it, it it's half hour, it goes by pretty quick. Um, if you have topics that, or I'll put a feeler out, next time I get an invite, I'll put a feeler out for topics that you would like to have you mention.
Yeah.
I I was just curious, because for all I know, you guys are on there every week, because I only, I only catch it like once every two weeks. I heard Lindsay do her deal, and I thought, man, that was a really good way to present that information.
Try to do it once a year.
Yeah, you're.
But that's no, it's your turn.
Oh, okay, well, we'll see about that.
And and they're really great, you know, it's really easy to to do those spots, it's always like, I'm like, oh. They're very, it's not high pressure, and and of course, I listen to a lot of them after the fact, I don't usually have time to listen to them when they're live. But you can go on to the um Elkhorn Media Group, Eastern Oregon, go all the way down, you can see Harney County live. And they've got them all online as, you know, you can listen to them, and so I often do that in the, in my exciting life at home. Uh, to to catch up on something.
Uh, I just wanted to say, as a millennial here, I wanted to add that we do have social media. And we could do like Mark Owens does his Moments with Mark update, and he posts that to his Facebook page, so if that's something you're interested in doing, I could help with that.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
And that's a, he does a, it's like a recorded video that he posts, right?
Uh, projects update, we talked about that for the for the fair board when we were talking about our M O U. But the the building is on schedule as they have planned. I actually got a text that the trucks are just arriving with the building today. But they'll be writing the better part of the two hundred thousand dollar check today that we won't be able to get back, so there's that too. The bathroom project, they, all the material is removed and they're ready to start the repairs and everything, right? So those are the projects, fairgrounds, I think, I think we talked last time about. Starting the coordinating coordination process without W R B, and I. I think what that will probably look like, I spoke with Dominic yesterday, and I think I will reach out to them and say. Let's, let's have a preliminary meeting to see what you envision coordination looking like. Dominic said, if if you, me, and them can just figure out what is this process gonna look like, then we can do a public meeting with everybody. And actually do the coordination, but he said, maybe reach out. Maybe reach out to Representative Owens and see what's going on in Salem, because sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. And it's a moving target, but that's the plan for coordination.
So we're, this is coordination with who?
With the Water Resource Department.
That's right.
And apparently, I had overlooked the statute that I had seen that they had to coordinate with us, technically. They are supposed to reach out to us sixty days. Prior to releasing a rule, and so Dominic said, maybe, maybe they didn't think they were two months out yet, but I kinda think it wasn't on their radar. So we'll get on their radar.
Um, I would, I would appreciate uh being a little up to speed before that meeting happens, and I don't know what's the proper way, but you. Or what I'm looking at to get up to speed, I mean, you know, the the main things that are are concerning. Or that we need to talk about, whether it's, you know, how they're um laying out the the areas or the timelines or anything else. Or the the particular approach they're doing, or if all that's already settled, I don't know.
Well, yeah, we'll find out what they envision that process looking like, and we will get up to speed, and maybe we'll change what their process will look like. And then I'm gonna have a meeting with Ben's representative tomorrow, just kinda came out of the blue. But is there anything we wanna ask our federal representatives to do?
Are you meeting in person?
Yeah.
Is he here tomorrow? Let's see.
I honestly, I can't think of anything to ask of our federal representation, most of our worries are more state-generated. There's a, there's a pet and livestock depredation bill that is in Congress, which would have huge impacts. And would delist the gray wolf, and that.
The Endangered Species Act overall um needs, you know, I saw that uh Representative Vance had a little. I saw something on on social media there, um. At least the title, I didn't, I didn't watch it, but um, I mean, there's just a lot of things. But no, I don't have anything, usually I'm I'm all on the constitutional rights stuff and. And he goes, and I say, who else do we go to, you're you're up there at the federal level, um.
I don't know in this continuing resolution that they're working its way through if S R S funds were in that, but it would be a question to ask. Because if it's not in it, and that means a separate appropriation that they're gonna have to do, and it'll just be longer before we get it. So it'd be nice to know if it's in that resolution or not.
I I'd appreciate if you'd mentioned that when it comes to any of the the federal initiatives or funding for high-speed internet. Called it broadband, but you know, everything they were doing was broadband fiber before. It's not trickling down to the most un and underserved, we've been doing everything we can with our capacity here, with the state. It's not, it's not working because we're not a broadband kind of a county, we're a hybrid solution to involve wireless and other things. And just, just tell them, we, we're we're hurting on that one, and and unless. The, at least the federal money and initiatives can be wide open. Or whatever works, we'll be left behind for many years.
That was all I had.
Thank you.
So that covers general deliberation, anything for the record? Well, not hearing anything, then I would, I don't know if we're supposed to always do this as a motion to adjourn, or if we just adjourn, but.
By general consensus.
Okay, so if there be no other bu- business, then I would say the county court is adjourned for this Wednesday, March nineteenth. Thank you. You have fourteen minutes to get squashed.